Live. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Kipsey Planning Board Meeting for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please start by joining me with a pledge.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We got a big agenda today. And a quorum of four board members here tonight for those listening on Zoom. So let's jump right into it. We're gonna lean on Eric for a second, so we're gonna go right to.
They can probably start with their presentation.
Yeah, that's true. Let's go Habitat for Humanity, Sunset Ave. Come on up. Oh, here he is. So who's presenting for Habitat?
I am.
Oh, okay. Oh, how you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
In person tonight.
Amy Vamardere for Habitat for Humanity. So since you last saw this, there's an extra lot. There's now six proposed lots. That's because the ratio, the calculation for the public space and the requirement for stormwater is, it allowed us to have more usable, developable area. So.
You might need to mute yourself.
If you have your laptop, mic on. That's usually what does it. Thank you. All right. Yep, we've seen this. It was a five lot. Now it's turned to six. And it looks like you solved the shared land issue.
Right. The shared land is now distributed amongst the six lots. And the, the, the six lots will each have a conservation easement so that they can't disturb that land. It'll be in an easement. I know that was a question of Eric's whether it would be their separate lots, but they would actually be one lot with each would have the portion of land conserved. So it would be a deed restriction. So that, um, that's another major change. I did do some drainage calculations and provided the drainage report and because we're disturbing less than twenty-five percent of the total area, I don't believe a SWIP is, a full SWIP is required post-construction. Features are required. So the calculations just show the impact of the development. It didn't include what's already being drained to the site in a drainage easement. We're not affecting anything that's going into that drainage easement. So that's why that was admitted. Um, I know that was a comment of Andy's to add that in.
All right. Anything else right now?
Uh, I know there's questions about the road dimensions, then I'll work through that with the engineering department.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Go to Eric.
Sure. Uh, let's see. The application's back for secret review and a clustered matrix subdivision approval and public hearing tonight. Uh, the, uh, certainly the moving to the deed restrictions is, uh, resolves a longstanding question of how to deal with the open space requirements of the subdivision. Uh, deed restriction is an acceptable way, uh, to do that. Uh, so that's, that's a good way. Uh, that said, there's, there's still quite a few comments, uh, left to go for which, after which we would hope with the next submittal, they can be resolved sufficient for staff to prepare possibly a negative declaration depending on what's in them. Uh, but some of the key issues would be resolving some of the public improvement areas like the drainage and the roadway because they're necessary to support uh, the, the density calculation for the clustered subdivisions. Um, so those, those details are necessary for that purpose. Hopefully we'll get that resolved next time. Um, also the, uh, for the board tonight, uh, there are some issues called up for the board's discussion. Um, in, in the staff review, uh, that would be helpful to confirm the board's thinking on. Some of them have been questions back and forth. And so good to go on the record with where the board is or if it have a preference, particularly with, um, there's some, a couple of new aspects such as the, uh, with the conserved open space and the proposed deed restrictions. Uh, there are some areas that are proposed to be graded for drainage and such before the conservation, uh, deed restriction is placed upon them. Are you okay with that? Or would you want to see the deed restriction, uh, changed to reflect conserved land? Um, and that's the planning board's discretion. Uh, there also the clustering calls for protect, you know, preservation of stone walls and trees to the maximum extent practicable. How practicable? Are you comfortable with the layout as shown for the conservation deed restricted areas? Uh, so those are for the planning board to discuss. Um, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Engineering, Andy?
Sure. Yeah. So like Amy said, um, earlier this week, we were having some conversations with the building department. Um, and the, the size of the cul-de-sac came up. Um, so we just want to make sure that the cul-de-sac implies a state fire code, fire access road requirement. So, you know, we can, I'm sure we can work that out. Um, Amy's correct, you know, it, it is residential subdivision, so it doesn't require permanent stormwater management practices, but we did ask them to prepare a drainage analysis, um, to make sure that there's no downstream, you know, impacts from, uh, the increased, you know, amount of runoff resulting from the development. Amy, I didn't actually get a copy of the, the report. If you want to just email it to me tomorrow, we can look at it for next time.
I mean, that could run down to the rail trail there, I guess.
Right, right. Um, we are also looking for just an updated, um, clearance letter from what be your, OPRHP. Um, the one that we received is pretty old. Um, let's see.
It was two thousand and seven, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
I did reach out to them, so that's.
Yeah, it's just, it's pretty easy, pretty easy to do. Um, there, we're gonna need some drainage easements, um, for the, um, drainage, existing drainage piping that's passing through the property. I think it's lots four, five, and six. And then for the new drainage lines that are coming off the end of the cul-de-sac, you know, just need to have those.
There is no four, five, and six. Uh, that's a proposed line.
The proposed line, but there's existing, there's an existing line that's coming up, going through there from Sunset that's coming down through there.
There's an outfall there. So I'm.
So, so, but you're gonna need to create a swell or something like that to convey it through those properties. So we'll need it over that.
So I'm proposing a pipe there. We'll talk about that.
Either way.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, let's see. We had a question about snow storage, but the, the highway superintendent confirmed that he's okay with what's shown, even if it's a little bigger than he needs. Um, and then we just need some more information in the engineer's report for the sewer. Sewer, you know, sewer pump station designed low-pressure sewer system. And then a bunch of other like kind of technical comments.
Sewer pumps have backup. Sewer pumps have backup generators for.
Yep, backup generators. Um, there's a day of storage and a backup generator, one pump. So.
And I guess the last thing we were asking if you could try to get an easement from Central Hudson so we don't need a wall. Um, I don't know if you heard back from them.
I did. I reached out to them by email last week. I have not heard back, but.
Okay.
So that would allow us to grade into the power line property.
Right.
Be a temporary grading easement, which isn't terrible to request, but.
We, I mean, since we're talking about dedicating the road, we prefer not to have the town be responsible for retaining all. We don't have to.
Yeah, that's a better idea to not have if you, if you don't need it. All right, thanks.
I did, uh, just since you mentioned easements, um, I did speak with Mike Simon, um, highway superintendent. Um, he did say that the, the depth of the snow easement off the cul-de-sac, um, he said he only needs about twenty-five or thirty feet. So that'll actually be to your benefit to reduce the area shown. It'll help with the density calculation.
Okay, I thought that looked big.
I had initially been proposing infiltrators under there, so in a preliminary layout. So that's why it was so, it was gonna be an easement either way. But since that's no longer proposed, I'll shorten it up.
That's good. All right, uh, it's on for public comments.
Um, Carol, I think, I think the well consultant, she had reviewed this initially.
Did you look at this?
Um, so she had a couple of comments.
It was a while ago, yeah. Yeah. My only comment is, um, I, I, Eric just pointed out the tree restriction. Thank you. Because now we're not only dealing with Indiana bats, also northern longer bat and tricolor bat is proposed. So the same timeframe. But there seems to be, um, lot four, um, half of the, well, most of the, um, conservation easement is graded. And this needs to be cleared and graded. And it seems like there might be something to, some way to avoid the total disruption of the land that you're putting into a conservation easement.
Okay, I'll look at that. The intent of the conservation easement is to not allow any further development, though.
I, I understood, but if it's already vegetated with mature trees and, and everything, you're just, okay, you're not allowing any development there. But it just seems like there's an awful lot of grading that is just, uh, in the, in back of lot four that may be, um, unnecessary.
Okay.
Well, we've asked that on other ones, too. It's, you know, it's, it's an easy way to develop it, just have all that graded, but you can be a little more creative and, and leave it as is in the easement.
Um, but that, the intent of that, the major intent of that grading is to promote the stormwater away from the, the home. So it's just kind, it's kind of going that way anyway. It's just kind of shifting the swell over, but I'll, I'll revisit it.
Okay, you can just, yeah, just take.
Amy, did you touch base with, um, Dutchess County Department of Public Works, Matt Dukovich? Because he had, he, they didn't respond to this circulation, but in the previous circulation, they had wanted to be kept informed with regard to drainage towards the rail trail.
I did not reach out to him, but I will. I'll get him a copy of this. What was his name? Matt?
Matt Dukovich.
Okay.
D U T C K, I think. No, D U T C A. B I T C H.
Get it close.
I have his email and phone if you need it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Carol. Thanks, Eric. This time I move the open to the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. Anyone on the audience or on Zoom tonight wish to comment on this application for Habitat? Seeing none, I move adjourn the public hearing to, what's the date? July? Eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. Go around the board for comments. Peter?
Uh, there is no more selfless or beneficial entity in our community than Habitat for Humanity. So we wish you good luck with this. It's a very difficult site. As, uh, others have been here in the past trying to get this done. Uh, but you've been tenacious enough to get this far. So I hope you get it over the, over the goal line. You know, it's a, you have acreage, four point seven acres, less than a third of that is buildable. I mean, that's says, pretty much says it all right there. And managing to get six lots out of that is pretty extraordinary. Um, each lot having a separate conservation easement, I think helps us a lot, uh, to get past the, you know, the requirements in the cluster subdivision. Um, the town engineer had a comment with regard to the, the size of the cul-de-sac and any concerns the fire district might have. I just want to ask you, under the comments from Fairview Fire, they said they have no further comments. Have you had any conversation with them post that?
Not, I've not spoken with the fire district, but I spoke to the fi, the, the building department who has just, not jurisdiction, but they're the, they're the interpreter of the code.
Okay.
Um, and they have, they don't believe that the requirements and the fire access road requirement, um, part of the code can be waived.
Uh, other than that, you know, you have, uh, over two dozen comments from the engineers. So you're gonna have your, your hands full for sure. But I think with you fill in the blanks, you know, I think, uh, you're, you're on your way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. Nicole?
Uh, so you're going to need a variance for, for the buffer, right, from ZBA? Did you see them already?
No, I didn't. I didn't know if I needed to be referred by this board or not, if I could just apply. Yeah, I, I will need a variance.
Okay. Um, so if you, are you planning on doing lighting?
I am proposing lighting. There's actually a lighting plan in the.
Okay. So it, with anything, uh, there's, I don't want to say that there's new specs, but like now instead of like three thousand, we're really looking for like twenty-seven hundred or somewhere in between, um, and downlit, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see what else here. Tree removal. We already talked about that. And you're gonna get with the water department? They were asking for a meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, Sharon?
Yeah.
Tonight. I, I'll just offer that, uh, I'm glad you were able to get a sixth house in there. That'll, that'll benefit the Habitat. And and for, as far as procedure, I think we have to do seeker before you can get it ruled by the ZBA, correct? They have to do seeker first, so.
Yeah.
Once we get through that. So I'd actually recommend, you know, you try to get an offline meeting with, with staff a little more for the next submittal. Try to iron out all the last details so you can just move forward with seeker.
Okay.
And, uh, I wish you luck as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Move the planning board defer action on this application as incomplete and direct the applicant to respond to writing and comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following one through twelve.
Uh, wait a second.
Any second.
Move to the seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Um, yeah, that's here.
Next up, Salt Point Center.
It's right here. And so.
Good evening. Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Jeff Kane.
Ken Kazanato from LRC.
Right. And, uh, I believe Mr. Wagshull might be on the phone, or if not, he'll be joining us, uh, uh, soon. So we wanted to, uh, first, I think, um, update you just for a minute on where we've been the last few months. Um, because it's been a while since we were here, but, uh, what we've, uh, what we've really been able to do, uh, I think most critically is we completed the floodplain analysis. And we've shared that with staff, uh, going through an analysis, shared with the staff and the consultants. And I believe it's agreed that, um, as designed, the analysis shows no impact upstream or downstream as a result of the proposed regrading. So that, uh, that, that analysis and that review is, uh, has, 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 I think, answered the questions. There are a couple of stormwater questions that I know, uh, CPO has that we're still, still working through. But I think, uh, that, uh, the floodplain study was, was a, was a real critical issue for, for, for review. Um, also again, uh, worked with, uh, worked with Carol, your wetlands consultant, and, uh, we've got concurrence that the proposed, uh, design measures. I really addressed any of the issues raised regarding potential impacts to the, uh, to the, the wetland buffer area. Um, and there's a recommendation that a permit can be granted for under the town's aquatic resource protection law. Um, DOT, when working with DOT and, um, um, they haven't raised any, any concern regarding the traffic volume or the design. DOT used to issue kind of a conceptual approval letter. They don't do that anymore. And, uh, what you really get is that, uh, as they focus in on the little details, it means they're happy with the overall big picture. So that's, that's, that's really kind of where we are in terms of the back and forth with, uh, with DOT. Like to be able to get you that letter, but we can't do it, right? It's just, it's not something that, uh, that the department does anymore. So, uh, but we are, we are working with them and, and have, uh, and have, 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 have good feedback from, uh, from, from DOT.
Yeah, I'm sure they're happy with the roundabout, uh, design.
Absolutely right. So.
Takes the whole intersection.
Right. If, if their comments were, um, make the roundabout a T intersection with a signal, we'd know we were on the wrong, uh, right. But we've got, uh, we've gotten their concurrence on the, on the roundabout, so. Um, we still have, um, uh, a couple of, uh, traffic volume issues related to, uh, JMC's, uh, uh, most recent, uh, uh, comments. And those are being, being finalized right now. Um, and we'll, we can have those for, for review, uh, hopefully for the next meeting. Um, Dutchess County Planning, um, um, I think the letters, they're mostly satisfied, which I think was a pretty good, uh, pretty good improvement over where we've been with county planning on this project. Um, they have some suggested, uh, suggested minor landscaping and signage modifications and will work, work through those as best we can.
Some street trees there.
Right, some street trees, yes. And I think that's, uh.
A little limited in that area because of the existing sewer and water utilities on there. But we, we have places where we can put them, just not be a consistent row that you would traditionally say.
Um, and we have some engineering issues to satisfy, uh, some site plan details that need to be addressed. Uh, so the plans really satisfy the intent that I think both, uh, both, uh, the town and we have, uh, been working, working forward. Um, and then there are some issues that we, we need to finalize with the board. Um, and hopefully we can do that tonight. I, I have, I have four and I don't, we don't. I think I can lay them out there and we can talk about them at whatever point that you want to talk to, but, uh, parking volume, um, the architectural setting as, uh, shown in the renderings. Um, uh, the adjacent sidewalks and amenities. And those are really kind of the four things that, that we wanted to talk through with the board. Um, uh, as well as anything, again, and, and, and specific the board would, uh, would, would, would like to, to, to discuss, uh, further. We're, we're hoping to at least, um, understand, uh, any outstanding issues related to seekers. We can get you that information and hopefully be in a position, um, uh, soon to, to get a, a secret determination on the project. So that's, uh, um, I think where, where we're, we're, we want to talk with the, with the board tonight, but we'll just go through where we will. Well, do you want, do you want us to go through the, the plan now, or do you want to, do you want to go through your comments first, or do you want us to see where?
Let's do a quick.
Okay.
Refresh her because it's been a while.
Sure.
We have new board members as well.
Are we live? Right. Okay, great. So, right, right. And you can see the, uh, the project at the intersection of Salt Point Turnpike and, uh, and, and this avenue. Um, and, um.
Space moves it.
Sorry, I can't see the, uh, I can't see the cursor. That's what I was looking for.
Oh, the point?
Yeah. Okay. How, can you see the cursor at all?
Yeah, there it is. It's, it's slight.
Okay, right. So building, building one is in the, uh, is in the back here.
Yep.
Building two along, uh, this side of Salt Point Turnpike and building three, uh, is in the, is in the back. Again, buildings one and three are four-story, uh, proposed. Building, uh, building two is a, is a three-story building. They're all, um, uh, uh, multi-use with, uh, commercial on the, on the ground floor and residential, um, uh, above. Um, this is, uh, again, the, kind of the, the, the overall site plan. You can see the, the new roundabout proposed, um, at the, at the intersection. There's a, you know, three-way light there now. Um, and, uh, we propose the, again, the fourth leg, which is the, the main side entrance. Um, and change that signal as intersection out to a, uh, to a full roundabout with sidewalks, uh, at all, uh, quadrants for pedestrian, um, uh, movements around. We also have a, um, a, a new bus stop proposed. We worked with County, uh, Loopus. And, um, their location, yeah, their location for the, for the, for the bus stop would be past the roundabout. They have, they need to be away from the intersection because they don't pull over. They like to stay in the lane. They don't like to merge out and merge back in. So they want to be, uh, be right, be right in the, uh, that's okay. They want to be right, uh, right, right there. So they need to be out of the intersection, uh, for the, for the bus stop. But, uh, because the bus comes up Ennis Avenue and it makes a left down Salt Point Turnpike to head in towards the, uh, towards the, 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 the community and the, and the, and the city. So. Um, this is, uh, the usable open space, um, on the, kind of the, the, the top of the screen there, the shaded area. That's the open field that'll, uh, remain. Um, uh, without development, we will have walking trail in there. We will, uh, uh, keep that maintained through a, uh, a regular mowing process every three years to keep it as a, as a healthy habitat for, uh, uh, for the, for the, particularly the, the birding species. Um, we've got a walking trail through there. Um, and, uh, we'll talk about amenities in a second. And then on the, uh, on the, on the, the right side of the screen there, that's a, that's the mole that leads up, uh, to the rail trail and to proposing that, uh, again, that, that path up to the, to the rail trail and the connector. Working with, uh, County DPW, they have a, a format. They use that last, uh, you know, forty or fifty feet that are in the, in the county right away from our connector to their connector. We have to have a license to be able to, to, to use and maintain that to connect, uh, uh, connect our path to the actual rail trail. We can, we think it's a nice amenity, uh, for the area and certainly for the, uh, for the, for the residents of, uh, of this project. Uh, so amenities, um, and I, I, um, we've added amenities. We've got some more we want to talk about, but we've added a small playground on the, uh, inside the walking trail there. We've got a community garden, uh, bocce courts. And, um, uh, we want to add some other items. We, we, a dog park, um, a bus shelter, which I talked about. Um, and, uh, we have a, a couple of, uh, gazebo's that we wanted to, wanted to add on the site here and, uh, and then a maintenance shed, which we, we understand we're, we're, we're gonna need. So again, some other additional, maintenance shed really isn't an amenity, but it is, it, it kind of is because if you don't have one, you end up with, with the stuff all over the place. So the, um, the, uh, again, the amenities on the, on the site here, I think will, uh, will, 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 uh, certainly make this, uh, make this, uh, a, a nice, uh, a nice residential, uh, project. So, again, the amenities on the site here, I think, will certainly make this a nice residential project. Yeah, talk about parking volumes in a minute, let me, or talk about that table in a minute. So parking was one of those things that, it's funny how we got here, because we came in initially with a plan that the parking conformed to the code, and the board said, "We get too much parking, we'd like you to reduce the parking." So we did, we've gone on this path, we've reduced the parking. And Collier's Engineering has done a sensitivity analysis on the parking and provided, well, what is the real parking demand based on the literature that's out there? And they have a number that's fewer parking spaces than what we've provided, and there's some questionable, you know, do we have enough parking? Is the parking study adequate? And we think it's adequate, we think we're convinced that we've got more than what the literature suggests, a little less than what the code might suggest, but we think we're in a good place there. And, you know, it's funny, when I, one of the comments on parking, and look at that table for a second, Ken, is just the, this table, and so this is, for instance, the weekday analysis, and the columns, you know, have the residential, commercial restaurant, commercial coffee shop, commercial office, commercial retail. And that grade band is when there is the peak parking. So for the, and the shared parking, the peak amount of parking you need is in the middle of the night, when it's just residents there, that's when you get the peak. And then, because going down the left-hand side there of the time today, you can see for each use when that use has the demand for how many parking spaces. And you can say, well, you can swap out, you're going to swap out, you know, coffee shop, you don't end up with a coffee shop. Maybe you have more retail, you don't have a office, maybe you have another restaurant. You know, those numbers, the peaks of each of those uses don't match up. So what we looked to provide here was a general mix of uses. We don't have leases signed here to fill all these spaces. So we have a general mix here to provide a blended number for what the parking demand would be. Because you could, again, every time you change a number and move it from one column to another, that peak of that particular use is parking gets adjusted. So you can see how each of those uses, the peak will go up and down depending on the time of day. Commercial office, right, you've only got really a parking demand between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Well, it's not the same with the restaurant. So you have all of these numbers and they get blended into a total peak demand per hour on the rightmost column. So that's the weekday, and then...
I mean, okay, I think some of the confusion was that we weren't sure what the uses were.
Right. We're not sure what the...
Whatever, and that goes to what the parking is sometimes, so.
Right. And we're not sure what the exact uses are going to be. There is going to be a mix, we try, again, try to pick out representative uses based on where we see demand these days. And again, it shows a peak parking demand, a little less than what we have. And you never want to be exactly, you never want to be exactly at that number because you have what you call, you know, frictional lack of parking spaces. So there might be, your demand is 170 and you get 170 spaces, but somebody's always pulling in and pulling out, so the 170 isn't really always in play. You have to have some available for people to be able to move in and out.
There's visitors and such.
Yeah, right. And then the other thing these tables, I think, show really well is that, and here's the weekend, you hit that peak of 143 only in one hour. So it's not like all the time is that peak projected at 143, it's during that peak hour, and you're below it for the other hours.
I think you had 169 is your...
And 169 is what, yes, what we're proposing. And I think that gives us that safety factor that we need. And then, this is, again, this is using those slightly different demand numbers, but the same issue on the weekday, the demand is reached overnight with the residences and then during the weekend. Last slide, yeah, weekend, same thing, it's in the morning.
And it's still all below what we were proposing.
Still below the number, okay. That's the key.
And the last thing I want to say is, and Eric and I were talking earlier about, you know, there's some comparison to some of the demand numbers that another board has seen at Eastdale. I want to say that the demand factors used here, it's not an apples-to-apples to Eastdale because in Eastdale, we've got, we had demand calculations, and then at the end, took a 10% credit on the non-residential and the resi above commercial. So that was sliced off at the end rather than what these demand numbers are. The shared parking is taken out in the demand number itself. So again, there's two different calculations, you can't necessarily compare the demand numbers between the two projects because they were developed differently, so.
I don't know if there's a place to do any land banking just in case.
There is.
There is.
Yeah, right there, the back right area where you have the walking trail coming to a point. If you cut that off and moved it to the middle area there and just had it come from the middle around, you could fit probably about 10 spaces right there. And that's what you're missing is you're short about 10 spaces.
That would be in the floodplain. That's, we had originally even looked at, could we put extra spaces down there? And then it became, if you're in the floodplain, you know, if it's flooded, you don't park there, but what if you leave your car as a resident and you're away and flooding happens? And how would you control that? And how would you, so we, the owner opted to not want to try to pursue that.
Although it begs the question, you're already adding in soil, you're already making this property higher than it currently is. So why couldn't you do that a bit in that area as, you know, possible?
So it was designed so that we wouldn't impact the floodplain. So by doing more, we would end up with potentially some impacts to that.
Yeah, we'll get away in from Carol too, I guess, to see what she thinks. It's something to think about, I guess.
We had been working with that auspice, we had talked about parking a long time ago, if you remember.
Yeah.
And that's where we kind of stuck with this plan to finalize the flooding analysis, which, as you know, has taken quite some time to go through and get clean. Real quick, though, I know one of Andy's comments was about the stormwater, and we'll get you some more information on that. The entire underground stormwater system was designed to hold the 100-year flood elevations without discharging. So it can hold our site's 100-year storm event in the storm chambers and whatnot. And we can get you some more information on that. And that has the backflow prevention to prevent any storm coming into it. Does have infiltration, obviously if you have stacking storms, it'll, we'd have to look at that on timing for what would be in the floodplain itself and when that would flood, you know, based on the times. So we can look a little more, if that's how far you want to go into it, we can go there too. But it was designed to hold all of it onsite inside so that we didn't have any discharge out if there was water there at the barrier, so to speak. Okay. The other option that we have discussed internally and, right, is what they call car stackers. And it really is a, it's a, it's a two-car stacker that you really would put in a row that one car pulls up and then it's lifted, the other car then parks underneath. And so that's, I think if it became, if parking became a real issue, those are something that we would consider installing here. Now, what I'm not clear on is how the board would want to address that in terms of a note on the map and how that would get implemented. I don't know if you have any thoughts. And number one is, would that be an acceptable solution to your concerns on parking numbers?
We've actually proposed that in the city of Poughkeepsie on a few sites that have now gotten approved, just haven't gotten through to construction for parking requirements. Puzzle parking, they call it, vertical puzzle parking.
See if Eric has any comments on that when he gets up.
I guess we'd have to see what it looks like and where, I mean, my immediate responses would be sure. I mean, it would be the equivalent of land bank parking, only it would be vertical instead of horizontal. And it seems like if that was a proposal, we could figure out a way to do it.
We're changing car types, I mean, everybody's allowed 1.5 cars, right? That's the code for the units.
That's the multiplier.
Multiplier, so.
Yeah, right, sorry, it's a multiplier, it's like, yeah, right.
You only get half a car.
Everybody gets one regular car and one smart car.
Right.
So that solves the parking issue.
The issue would be how you figure out, you know, the two people, it would have to be people obviously sharing a dwelling unit or something like that.
Well, actually, it's set up, it's actually kind of set up uniquely in the ones that we have done where there's an assigned space, and when you pull up, there's always one open. So if there's six spaces across and there's six spaces above, there's one that's open, and they literally will pick up and move and go to different spaces depending on...
So it's not necessarily one to one?
Not necessarily one to one, depending on which system.
Right, I've seen a different, it says different system, but yes, yes.
Every system's slightly different that way. But we can manage it.
But if your space happens to be the upper one, you don't necessarily have to control the lower one as well because it just, it doesn't impact the car below when it comes down.
As long as I'm parked upstairs, I can get out when I need to.
Yes, yes, yes.
I guess the big question would be, though, if the board actually feels, first of all, that, you know, after what we've talked about, we feel we have adequate. If you feel we don't, that we have to explore that, some other option that way.
Something like that may, versus the floodplain impact again, so that's another whole can of worms to open. All right, anything more presentation wise right now?
And then, so, yeah, then you've asked for some renderings, and I must confess, they're not complete, but we have completed the ones that, from the interior, that you've asked. And so this is, again, looking at Building Three from the, actually, that's Building One, from the roundabout. That's... Yeah, right, right, that's good. It's also Building One, right?
That was Building Two.
Oh, that's, oh, that's Building Two from the other side, sorry, yes, yes, there we go. Couldn't see my own...
The meeting text covers right across the top of the table.
You look at the actual screen, that's, right, so yes, that's Building Two, again, from the inside. Oh, this is from the other entrance, this is from the entrance. Right, there's looking at Building Two from the EV charging spa, it's kind of right in the middle of the site. Building, again, Building Two is the three-story building. And...
That's it.
That's it, right, so we have those completed. And again, we think that they show, that they sit well on the site. I know that one of the things that we owe you, we have the views from Salt Point Turnpike, looking at Building Two.
Because that Building Two is a little bit higher up than Salt Point Turnpike itself.
Yes, so that's, that rendering is still in the works, and so we'll have that, but...
Great. All right, go to Eric for apartments.
Sure. The board's still working on seeker review for the site plan special use permit and also the aquatic resource permit, then to be followed by architectural review with a public hearing tonight. The, for seeker, Jeff, I think, outlined the issues pretty well. The goal would be to identify, you know, what's left for seeker for next time. He did mention that they're anticipating, with the comments they've already received, making a submittal for June, so the board, and they're going to respond pretty much to the main comment. Yeah, yeah, so he told me they're already working on it. So I think the request would be for the board to please hold on to your materials from this meeting because you may need them again next month.
Right, I think that is, we may give you select sheets, but not the whole package? If that's acceptable, great.
That would be fine. Yeah, I think that would be a good way to do it. As far as planning, it's not clearly, it doesn't appear, there's still a few seeker issues left to deal with. In planning, among the planning issues, I guess, for the board discussion, there were just a couple of issues for the board's discretion. One was the roundabout, staff noticed that the sidewalks were immediately adjacent to the lanes. And I know I talked with the traffic consultant about that a little bit. It doesn't show up in his comments, but his response was that there tends to be a preference to have some space. It is a little safer if the sidewalks are separated at all from the travel lane.
Right.
But it's not a requirement. Right now, they're mostly next to the travel lane, so there's a comment asking the applicant to take a look at that. That would be your discretion whether you support that or not.
And our traffic consultant is on the Zoom as well, if you want to talk about, he can talk about that at the appropriate time.
Little buffer there.
Yeah, we're squeezed on some issues, which is why I'd like him to maybe address it, to talk with the board about it. So we can go there in a minute once you're done, sorry.
The other one had to do with the parking projections. We just observed, again, we observed that the specific uses that were identified solely for the purpose, it appears that they're solely for the purpose of the parking analysis as opposed to on the site plan. One of our comments, and one of the consultant's comments, was to show those uses on the site plan. And based on my conversation, it sounds like they're being utilized for the purpose of projecting a parking estimate. Because the specific uses, as the board has learned from other mixed, large, mixed-use developments, it's not all that predictable. You could get restaurants, you could get offices, you can get whatever, it's not known at this time. So Jeff is correct in that the intent to do a combined parking study of mixed uses does more accurately represent, could more accurately represent the produced demand, you know, at any given point in time. The concern is that the numbers that are used, the uses that were selected and according to these sizes, have multipliers which are really essentially no different than the underlying Salt Point Center district. And they're also quite a bit less than the board has seen with its experience of similar uses at Eastdale Village and elsewhere. So the concern is that if it was, if there was space to work with, as in Eastdale, there was land bank parking, and at Hudson Heritage, there were large fields of parking available that could accommodate changes in actual use compared to anticipated. As you just noted in your discussion about the floodplain area, there's a very limited envelope for development here. And if there is a future increased demand, then the board may be faced with either, the applicant will be faced with not enough parking, depending on the uses that come in, or a request to amend the plans to do something to expand parking beyond the envelope that is now here. So the thought was, it would be better if it's possible to have, right now, the estimate seems to be on the low end. And the parking could work according to this estimate. For the board's discretion is, do you want to see consideration of some additional parking perhaps for land banking so to allow for potential changes in use that could occur over time? I think that was pretty much, and then the last thing was, we thought the board has asked for the street view, street elevation view, because that speaks to layout.
Right.
So those were the items for, that we were recommending for the board's discussion with the hope that if we can get those directions nailed down and with a direction, then that would enable the applicant perhaps to move ahead at the next meeting. I will also, just for, since Mark Petrowo's not here tonight, he did provide a letter and a couple of, he identified some things, I'm told the applicant's consultant's already working on that. So hopefully that will all be resolved. We had also thought that the board, and probably the engineer, would want to see the highway improvement plans. It's understood they're a work in progress, but there's always things in highway plans which are of interest in the site plan layout. It would be good to have a look at those before the board commits to a seeker action.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, Mark had some issues with signers, but he was, he's the one that brought up the parking issue also.
Did he raise the parking issue?
He's number two.
He raised it in context of uses. He was also unclear as to whether the uses were intended to be site plan specific or not.
He saw discrepancy between the shared parking analysis depicted certain uses versus what is now listed, so. You can take a look at his letter. And I think we've said enough about Mark, so let's go to... And I think we said enough about Mark. So let's go to Andy next.
Sure. So, you know, most of our, most of our comments have been addressed actually at this point. As far as seeker is concerned, besides stormwater, we were looking for the applicant to do a video inspection of the downstream existing sanitary sewer. We resolved what sections needed to be resolved to inspect it yesterday so that they can proceed with that. I did take a look at the floodplain analysis. I thought, I thought it was pretty, pretty good. Pretty much said what we expected it to. I do have a couple of questions. I want him to provide the mapping that's associated with, with the study. Some questions about the elevation data. I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear. And I do want to see, you know, a signed and sealed copy by an ER state engineer. I do want to touch on the, on the car stacking idea. I think if I, if the board wants to consider that type of a device, I would think that it should be part of the regular parking plan and that, because it's going to be, that would be a difficult thing to build later. Because there's going to be foundations associated with it, there's going to be utilities associated with it. And I think it's something that you're going to want to hide. I don't think it's something you're going to want out by Salt Point Turnpike. So you're going to want landscaping, you're going to want it maybe in the back corner somewhere. If it's in the back corner, they have underground infiltration chambers there that you're going to have to work around. So I would suggest that if you're going to do something like that, it becomes part of the site plan and you land bank other parking somewhere else.
Well, we could come up with a foundation design for it that allowed it to be done in the future.
Okay. So if you plan for it, that's fine.
Yes.
It's, there's a lot of considerations for that.
Agreed.
Do one of those carve on the vending machine kind of thing.
Well, it's, you, you live, but it really is more, is more like that. It's not, it's not structured parking like a garage. It is more, it really is more like that.
You know, as, as far as the, as far as the parking, I guess I want to just make sure everybody, kind of refresh everybody's memories. There, there's, there's a couple of different flood issues here. There's, there's the floodplain and then there's the floodway. The floodway, we, there's no fill allowed at all.
Correct.
And that follows the, the retaining wall along the, the western edge of the property. They're removing fill from that, and that's what we wanted to make sure was okay with the flood study. So that.
Right. The capacity.
That's, that we're comfortable with, but no fill is allowed there. And that's what would be required if they were going to put parking in down there. They are filling in the floodplain, which again is, is allowed. And we've got the study to show that it's okay. What else? I guess the only other thing I noticed, I may have asked this question before, but you're, as far as the sidewalk along Salt Point Turnpike, and it'd be a good reason to get the DOT plans, the existing bridge has the sidewalk on the south side. Your plans are showing the sidewalk on the north side. I'm just curious how that's, what, what the plan is for that.
Right. So we, we show sidewalk on the north side to a point and then it stops. Because the idea is you don't want to leave people all the way to their bridge and then they don't have anywhere to go. Right. So, and, and at this point, the, the sidewalk will stop at the bus, at the bus shelter. Right? So from, and then from that point forward, there's a note which, right, the note, the note doesn't, doesn't do justice to what we, what we intended. And so we'll, we'll change the note. But the idea is that should there be a design from DOT in the future that's going to widen that, that bridge over the, over the fall hill? And they want sidewalk that we're amenable to give them, you know, up to 10 feet to install sidewalk. A permanent easement for up to 10 feet to install sidewalk as may be required for, for that, for that design. So that would then connect the rest of the site through to a crossing over the bridge. And so it's a, it's right, wouldn't go to the town of Bickham, see a permanent easement really to, to DOT in the future, should their design, should their design call for it. The commitment is to the town that we're going to give the easement, I guess, is how, is how, at least I'm thinking about it.
It's not a creative trigger point kind of thing to create it if the DOT.
Correct. Right, right. The trigger is that the DOT builds a bridge. Right, right. That's, yeah. Or somebody builds a bridge, likely the DOT.
There, there was a discussion at least a year ago or two, maybe two, where, where the board, I, I think board, it might have been an offline meeting, where a couple of board members and staff also asked about, asked about that because of that on the south side of the bridge. And actually, it was determined that's not, on the south side of the bridge is actually not a sidewalk. It's a maintenance way. It can't be a sidewalk because it's not, it's not wide enough.
Right.
So the thought at that time was that if there is ever given a development in the city of Bickham, see on one side or the town, or on this side of the bridge, if the DOT, no individual developer is likely to propose a development large enough to justify the replacement of that bridge. If DOT ever did so, however, it probably would include some type of pedestrian accommodations.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, yeah, there's, I mean, there's land for sale there too, in the floodplain too. All right. I think we talked that one to death. Anything, Carol?
I'm sorry. And I'll just, I, I overlooked, there was one factual error in my, in the staff review where I, there was a, in the second paragraph where it talks over proposed commercial area to 109,000 square foot. It's actually a proposed increase of 7,300 square feet increased residential to a site total of 109,000 square feet, not commercial. Just to clarify.
Thanks, Eric. Peter will probably have caught that, yes. Carol, what's your latest look on this?
Yeah. They've done a really good job of accommodating and putting in all the notes and the questions we had about endangered species in the area.
Maybe we can pull your mic down a little, make sure it's on.
Do have to include a little bit, embellish the, the notes like we, the other, we talked about in the other site. For landing turtles, just as per NICE deck requirements.
We can do that.
About the monitor and stuff. So just, those, those need to be all inclusive on the, on the plans. And basically, we just gave them some suggestions on species and some locations. The one, probably the only critical thing is some of the silt fencing is there for erosion control. And some of the silt fencing is there for protection of landing turtles. And they're on two different sheets because they're for two different purposes. However, yeah, it's timing, timing is critical. So having those notes together, you can avoid having an issue down the road when we didn't get in on time because it's not, you know.
And I do know you asked one of the questions of maintenance down there. And the only area that's going to be mowed is just a few feet off of each side of this, the walking way. The rest of it would be left as a meadow area to be that way, only mowed on a biannual or every other year type maintenance.
Right. And we can, and, and now there's, there's really some benefit to doing like half one year or a third, one year and a half. And that's, but that's something we can work on down the road. That's not critical for the plan, but.
Great. Thanks, Carol. It sounded like the, the study has gone well for the floodway and floodplain. All right. It's time for a public hearing. So will we open the public hearing?
Second.
Called, called question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone in the room who wish to talk on this project or on Zoom? Can unmute yourself on Zoom if you wish to talk. And we have one in the room here. Just come on down. You have to come down to the mic.
Come on down.
Just so it's on the record. You say your name and.
You're the next contestant.
Hi, I'm Kathy Smith. I'm here with my brother and sister. We own that property. So I'm, I'm interested in how the floodplain analysis was done. Because in our lifetime, we've, we've farmed that place and it's never flooded. So I've been wondering what, how, how that study works.
Okay.
And in the last hundred years, there's been a lot of development along that creek. That's changed whenever it was deemed a hundred floodplain. So I'm just wondering.
We know, we know it had some, we had the flooding in the Irene on.
Yeah. I'll, I'll do my best to explain it. Basically, you know, FEMA has maps of, of where they expect flooding to occur. They developed those maps with a hydrologic model to figure out how much water is flowing through there. That establishes the boundaries. They've had to recreate that model because it's old. They had to update it to the new current model, new modeling system program. And then what they did after they recreated the existing model, they added the improvements that they're shown here and evaluated that to see how the, the changes would affect those floodplain boundaries. So it's, it's, that's kind of the, the layman way of explaining. So.
And the result came out that, that didn't look like it would harm it. So.
So it's just still a floodplain even though it hasn't flooded in at least 85 years?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, oh, one more question. Why can't there be fill put in in the back? I didn't understand that.
So there, there's, there's a floodway, which is where the, the majority of the water is flowing. That's the channel, more or less the channelized portion of the flood area. And then there's the floodplain. The way that FEMA has established these, these boundaries is that you can actually fill in the floodplain up to the boundary of the floodway without having more than a foot change in elevation in the floodway. That's, that's the.
Because?
And that can affect downstream things.
Okay.
If you change that, the way the water's flowing.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Kathy. Anyone else? All right. And we'll have another opportunity as well. This time, I will adjourn the public hearing to June 20th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Go around the board for comments on this one. Start with Nicole this time.
We might have gone through this last time, but do you guys know when the contract ends for the billboard? Do you have that information?
We don't, but we're, we're, we're looking for it. Still trying to get it.
And, and when that contract ends, that billboard will be taken down? It'll, it'll be removed or you're not sure?
Right. We, right. It's, we have to, we have to, we have to be in compliance, right? So that's a needs removal, then it needs removal, but whatever, whatever compliance means.
Okay. And I, I think you went over this before, but that transformer, you're going to screen that, screen that with landscaping. Okay. All right. And, yeah, you're going to need a variance for the four stories. And I think that's pretty much it. Obviously, floodplain permit, you'll have to submit that to the building department. You know that. Okay. All right. Yeah, that's all.
It's been submitted as part of the application.
Okay. All right. Great. That's it.
Thanks. Anything, Sharon? I know it's your first time seeing this project.
No, but I, there's a lot of time spent on it, so I don't think I have anything to pull apart on it.
All right. Thank you.
We're happy to answer any questions. I recognize that it's new for you, but if you've got anything, right, please ask away.
No, I was trying to stay at the same time. Thank you.
And Peter?
Just a couple of things. One, it's, I think it's pretty impressive that the site can contain a hundred-year flood without discharge. You've looked at that and you're satisfied?
We've looked at it. We have questions that, that we're, we're going to work with council office to, to resolve. We're getting there.
At the last submission, the county submitted some pretty serious concerns. I think it was about velocity.
Yeah, that's, that's related to the floodplain analysis. And, you know, based on the, the analysis that we, that they provided, there's no change in elevation and, and most of the velocities are actually produced by just miniscule amounts. So.
So you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Eastdale had land, land banking, as I recall.
Yes, Eastdale did land bank parking. Eastdale's a, you know, obviously a much larger.
It is. But how was it worked out? I mean.
We, we showed grade areas, shaded areas on the map and then.
I mean, how many spaces do you have?
How many, how many spaces did we?
I mean, have you been using the land bank?
Yes, they've been, right. They, they have been, they've been, they've been used. Yeah.
I think that's something that we, we might want to take a look at when we're looking at the parking. Even though there's, again, more demand at Eastdale than there would be here, I'd like to see, you know, if, if there is an effect there. I mean, we, we, I remember the county especially was upset because of the volume of parking that we provided for Eastdale. And yet, it seems that you're, you seem to be using it up. I mean, I.
Right. So it's. You know, we're not built out all the way. And so we, right, we, we, right, right. So we, 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 we think based on, based on that, that, that it's, it's, it's going to be required. But, you know, I'm not going to know until the end.
I'm just saying, look before you leave. That's always something to keep in mind. I have a question for our environmental consultant. My family and many of my friends when I was growing up were farmers. And one plant that was dreaded and hated more than any other, and that was the milkweed. Because it's toxic. I mean, it's great for, for, for monarch butterflies. They're the only creature that I know of that can feast without getting sick.
They survive on it, yes. And that's why they, the other critters don't eat the butterflies because they have that toxin in their body.
So should we be concerned? And they're very prolific. I mean, they, they will spread.
Certain species, the common milkweed is more of an aggressive species. But then there are other ones that are much more containable. But, you know, the, the, it's moving toward plant milkweed because the, a monarch is an endangered species now.
Sure. Absolutely.
And so since it's the only thing that the larva can eat, they cannot survive without milkweed. So that's the only way to get them back.
But you feel like it's, it's containable?
Well, it certainly, yeah. I, then if, if there is a concern, and I haven't seen enough milkweed in this area. I remember when I was a kid, it was all over the place. It's not any longer. But there are the different species that are much less aggressive, that are still.
Is this one of them, the one that you're recommending?
Yes, two of them. The, the swamp milkweed, I was just talking to Lisa about this the other day. The swamp well milkweed and the butterfly milkweed are much less aggressive than the common milkweed.
Thanks.
And the other thing is, you know, it's, I, I know they, they spread by those little seeds.
Sure.
We're, we're in an area that it's, there's not a lot of fertile grounds. So maybe this is an area to, you know, to experiment.
Thank you.
Good question. You don't want to feed something to a base.
Well, it's the toxicity more than the invasiveness. So, I mean, if you want to see a, a sick cow.
Any cows proposed on this?
You left them home.
But it's not sick to humans as well.
Watch that.
Anything else, Peter?
No.
Okay. I think, yeah, we discussed all this, the parking, the sidewalk, the bus stop. The only thing we didn't hit on was architecture. And board members present like the looks at the architecture before they move forward.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Looks, looks good to me. I know the county had some comments a while back.
Seems like we've kind of addressed theirs now that they weren't really concerned over that. They do, we do have to show the visual, obviously, from Salt Point.
Yep. Yep. That's the last thing is that elevation from there.
So if I can, right, I know we've, we've talked about the parking, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little unclear. So, but, and I, I, I think Nicole, you, you mentioned 10 spaces. So if we showed an area with 10 and, and we'll talk again whether we need to go find some spaces horizontally or if we can find 10 spaces vertically. If we can show an area for 10 double stacked spaces, is that, is that, is that the number you're looking for that will, you think will satisfy the, the board's concerns for?
I think that was the difference, but I don't know if anyone else had any comments.
I think part of the question comes from Mark, and he's not here to speak for himself tonight. But he said that the analysis was based on commercial, depicts only retail and office use. But the site plans appear to show more restaurants and things like that. And so, you know, if there's a parking mix that shows the restaurants and still comes in at 169, you know, shows the more intense parking uses, but comes in within that range, then I think the board might be okay with it. I think the issue was what was shown on the site plan versus what was used in the traffic study.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So I, and I, and maybe I missed it, but, but, and, and we can ask Mike Amendola to address it and if Mike, Mike can get on. But, you know, Mark's comments were really only about. But, uh, yeah, Mike, if you wanna jump in, please.
Yeah, so Mark's comment, this is, uh, Mike Amendola with Collers Engineering, the traffic consultant. Uh, Mark's comment was regarding the discrepancy between the trip generation that's in the traffic study and the way that was done, and the way that the parking, uh, the shared parking analysis was done, which broke it down into those individual uses that, that you guys are referring to. So the parking analysis was broken down more, um, more than the traffic study was, um, and that's where, where the comment came from. Went more than the traffic, uh, trip generation, uh, was, and that's where the comment came from.
That's, that's, that's correct, 'cause Mark was focused on the traffic study. That, that's, um.
Correct. Yeah.
It's, you know, his comments on the full, the EAF and the appendices. But I think, but I think the, the reasoning, the reasoning is the one that we already discussed with regard to the parking study. And, and I think Lisa kinda hit it on the head. It would be, if we could get, like, for example, the outdoor restaurant uses on the plan are not reflected in the parks, parking study at all, in any, in any of the multipliers. So I think it would be, rather than identify an arbitrary number now, I think it would be helpful to get some kind of a blended number, you know, or have the parking study adjusted to more act, to reflect a slightly more conservative analysis of the, of the potential parking on the site. And then, and I think then the board would be in a better position to, um, you know, to identify how many is okay, 'cause that's where their discretion comes in.
So then, all right, so, thank you. Let me just, so then, then, is the land bank number the difference between that more conservative park analysis of what we've provided? I mean, what's the, what's the, what's the?
What's the code say? You said that, you were there.
Well, the code says.
Between the code and their, and their college.
Right, 'cause the, 'cause the land, the, the analysis is here, we provided here, and the code is here. I mean, is, is it this gap that you wanna cover?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So then, if we, right, so, so then, the parking study is, 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 I don't know what are the parking study at this point, for us first, if really, you, you, you want, you want the, the, the code number adjusted to include the outdoor seating, and so that's, that's the, that's the gap that we need to.
How much, how much is the difference to the code at this point?
Well, the, um.
It was one sixty-nine versus one seventy-eight.
There's, there's, there's two, there's two different variables.
It was about ten.
About nine, nine spaces, or, okay.
Yeah.
Ten.
Ten.
Nine spaces, yeah. So that's where the ten comes from.
Yeah.
Right, and it may be more, once we put in the, uh, the outdoor seating, that, 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 that one seventy-six or whatever number may, may.
One seventy-eight.
One seventy, the one seventy-eight may grow, and so maybe more than, than, than ten. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what.
I guess that's the concern, and we don't want, we don't want it to be operating and they have people market all over the.
Nor do, nor do we.
Something, so, yeah.
Uh, you can't park there.
Yeah.
It's six thirty.
Six thirty, yeah, but I thought Andy was gonna.
All right. So you know what, I mean, if you have any more information when you come back in June on that.
Please keep your phones muted. Uh, thank you.
All right.
And, and did you wanna talk about the, uh, the, the, as, as Eric raises, and Mike's on the, uh, on the line, wanna talk about the sidewalks and the offset, uh, from the travelway and the, uh, and the roundabouts? 'Cause I think he's, he's got some, some insight into why.
You mean, put your buffer on there?
Why it is, yeah.
Right.
Can you address that?
Is there a way to squeeze a buffer in there, and so he's more comfortable to walk with the buffer?
Yeah, I could speak to that. So, um, on the west side of Salt Point Turnpike, I'm not sure if you guys have the site plan in front of you.
Try and pull it up in the corner to blow up.
There we go.
So, yeah, I see it. So north of the roundabout there, we, we do provide the buffer, um, on the west side of Salt Point Turnpike.
Yep, I see that.
On the east side, in, in, internal to the roundabout, that sidewalk is only, it's only connecting, um, pedestrians that are circulating the roundabout, it's not connecting to any other sidewalk. And in addition to, and that, that's one reason why we didn't provide a buffer. The other reason is that, as you could see, there's, there's right-of-way constraints in that area. There's, um, utilities in, in that area, overhead and underground, I would assume. Um, and I think the more so is that it's, it's a right-of-way constraint in that area. Um, and the same situation goes for, uh, that corner that Jeff is looking at right now. I think the, it, it might be misrepresented where the right-of-way line is, but the right-of-way line is almost right up against the back of the sidewalk right now.
Yep.
Um, it's that, it's the second, well, our survey might have it depicted more clearly, um, on the highway, on the, or our, our plans, on the highway improvement plans, but it's not that dash line that you see, that straight, it's, it's the curved line.
It's around.
So there are right-of-way constraints there as well.
Okay.
Um, so that's why, and we had to, we actually moved the center of the roundabout further away from that property, um, as much as we could, um, to, to allow even installation of that sidewalk in that corner.
What about the northwest?
And then, yeah, the, so the northwest corner, again, initially it was only connecting those two crosswalks, and then we had the plan, um, that extends that sidewalk to the south along Salt Point Turnpike, you know, going towards that bridge that we were alluding to earlier. And again, there, there are right-of-way constraints along that stretch as well, and, and that's, um, you know, kinda where we talked about with, if the DOT had a plan to replace that bridge, then, um, the applicant would, would be willing to dedicate land, uh, you know, to install that sidewalk for them.
So that dash, that dash line's not the right-of-way there, then?
So that, that, you're talking about in the corner specifically, like in, internal to the roundabout?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's the, that's the dedication that, that's being done for the roundabout, right, to the state?
This is what being.
And.
So maybe.
Yeah.
Right. In that, in that quadrant, Mike, we can hard out in that quadrant. Move the sidewalk to that, that buffer, 'cause that's, that's.
Yeah.
That'll be the most traveled for people from the bus stop.
Sure. Yeah, that, we can, we can, we can certainly, uh, take a look at, um.
How to get behind.
Pushing that sidewalk back and, and providing that buffer. Um, but then, you know, on the other end where it ramps, you know, kind of in that straightened section, going south on Salt Point Turnpike, I, I think we would need to be back, um, you know, up against the curb because of the right-of-way constraint, but we, we can, we'll take a look at how that's gonna lay out and, um, how the alignment of the sidewalk's gonna work, um, if, if we have to, if we do end up pushing that sidewalk back to provide the buffer in that northwest corner.
I guess, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna jump in on that, uh, the southeast leg, the, between Salt Point and Innes Avenue. Um, Mark was concerned with that also because it was, I know he had asked, one of his comments had to do with uncertainty regarding whether the largest truck can make that turn, and there's a high volume of traffic that's gonna be using that leg of the roundabout, um, including a lot of truck traffic. And so, if, if there's anything you could do, even a one or two-foot space between the roadway and the sidewalk, um, that's gonna be safer than if there were none.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we can, we can take a look at, at that and, and, and see how much room we have to provide any bu, a, a buffer, if any. Um, but, we do, the turning tracks that we provided do show, and I know that they're just, um, you know, they're not real, real life, the turning tracks, but, but they do show that, that there is adequate room, um, for all movements from, from, to and from Innes Avenue. Um, and I think Mark, Mark had said that, that one of them, uh, looked like it might've jumped over the, the median. Um, I'm not sure which track he was referring to specifically, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, it's a mountable circle in the center, right?
The inside.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the islands are, are fully not, are proposed to be fully mountable, yes, so that they can be used, um, and ma, maybe he was referring to one of the, the curb ramps, I'll, I'll take a look at that and, um, and we'll see what we can do there.
Yeah, and just to make people feel safe as possible is the idea.
Yep, understood.
Notice topography is there too, so. All right. Thanks for your comments. Um, anything else from board members at this time?
See you back in June. Yeah. Do we have a copy of, uh, that, uh, parking study?
Yes. It's, uh, it's in the traffic report.
Okay.
Um, it's the, it's the first appendix in the traffic report. Uh, it's not, it's, it's.
Yeah, right. Yeah, thanks.
Who do we have?
Okay. I move the planning board, determine that this application is incomplete for action on this application, and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including, not limited to, the following, one through seventeen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Move to the seconded. Call the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes forty to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To go for tonight, we'll see you next month. Next up is Marist College Running Track. Waiting in the wings here.
As you know, my name is John Andrews. I'm with Roadie Soika and Andrews, consulting engineers here in Poughkeepsie. With me this evening is Justin Butwell, the director of physical plant from Marist College. We are before you tonight for the running track and turf field. Um, Justin has directed me to be brief, so, which is not, I'm not known for, but I will try to do that. Um, we have continued to advance the design. As you know, it's an NCAA Division One track with an interior turf field. Um, in the, since last time of meeting, we did meet with Andy Lern. Andy had, um, some serious issues with respect to drainage. We've been able to refine our drainage analysis and design, and we believe we are in a position to address his concerns. We have a draft revised SWIP, which we will be submitting, uh, to address his concerns. Um, the other thing is, what we have done is we have gotten a preliminary report back on our soil borings and rock analysis. You're all familiar, on the easterly side of the new facility, we were proposing a retaining wall. The first set of drawings had that retaining wall at twenty feet. A twenty-foot-high retaining wall is a rather expensive and daunting undertaking. So what we've been able to do is what we've done elsewhere at Marist College. We will probably have a six-foot, uh, retaining wall, uh, along the base of it, and then we will cut the rock slope at a reasonable grade, in this case, uh, three vertical on two horizontal, and that'll give us an exposed rock face. So if you've ever driven through Marist College where we have exposed rock.
Yeah.
That's what it's gonna look like. But we'll have a nice stone wall at the bottom. It'll be set away from the wall, so there'll be a capture in case anything spalls off. Um, it also, at Justin's request, gives us about a four-foot area where we may end up planting some shrubs and other greenery to kind of address the base of that rock. Unfortunately, what it does is it peels the parking back, parking lot above it back a little bit. So we had to reconfigure the parking lot. We're probably gonna do some reconfiguration up there. The net is, we're not losing as many spaces as one might think, but we are losing spaces. Um, the other issue, um, Kristen raised it, there's, there's kind of like an orphan parking lot that's down at the south end of this whole project. A portion of that parking lot is on Marist property, and a portion is on the city-town water treatment plant property. Um, the best I can say, going back through our research records, that's been the existing condition since somewhere around nineteen ninety, and it was actually paved in ninety-five. So prompted by Kristen's remarks, we did reach out to the town attorney, Mr. Jim Nelson. Mr. Nelson and I had a long discussion on it. We are exploring options, um, to address it, and we are looking to meet both with the, uh, the town supervisor and the mayor of the city of Poughkeepsie, uh, in the near future to see if we can't, uh, a, address it and, and make it legal. Um, it, it does seem that in the, in the best interest of everybody, it might be a simple license agreement, which says, yes, you can use it, um, you're gonna grant us a hold harmless and a defense and indemnification and a maintenance agreement to take care of it. And the reason that makes sense, just so you know, there, between us and the town properties, there's a rather substantial ravine with a drainage swale that's been used by everybody and their brother. So in essence, the town can't get there from their property. So, but, and, but we're working on it. We didn't let it, we didn't let it die. It's just that, um, the wheels of the higher levels of government move somewhat slowly. So.
Some, some agreement versus the lot line adjustment.
Yep, exactly. Um, it, it gets complicated, Mr. Chairman, when you try to acquire town properties. There's monies that change hands, there's, there's, there's all sorts of things. So the easiest way is a license agreement, and it's actually revocable. So, and, and it's, it's not necessary, the, the only thing that's necessary for a design is restriping. So we think it addresses it. And then the last thing I just wanna bring up, coincidentally, 'cause I think it covers a lot of the issues that you folks had discussed at last meeting. Since the last meeting, Marist hosted the Women's Softball Division One MAC Championship Tournament. So in, in essence, Marist finished number one in the standings, so as number one in the standings, they were the home team. Um, there were eleven teams over four days, located and staged on the women's softball field, which is just north of where our proposal is. And everyone was concerned, how is this handled? Um, quite simply, we brought in, uh, a series of porta-johns. They were staged and, and located in the parking lot at the south end. Um, the team buses were brought in, and a bus stop was created right in front of North Campus Housing, where the, um, the plaza is. Buses unloaded at that plaza, teams staged there, and then they either wandered through the North Campus Housing, uh, complex down to the staircase, or they actually walked down the road. Once the buses dropped off, they left campus and were actually staged and parked on Fulton Street. Um, security was there to handle spectator parking and other things. They were directed to available spaces on, on campus. Um, and, and basically, it was seamless, and I don't think anybody in the community knew that we had eleven teams, I think three games a day, over four days for that championship. So we believe we can accommodate, um, the various concerns with what we've done, and, um, I, I think, having said that, that kind of addresses some of the issues that you folks had brought up last time. And, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Justin, because we did learn some lessons.
Okay, just to add to that, uh, there was some questions about, uh, natural turf versus, um, artificial, and the reason for the artificial is really about use, we're underserving the needs of our club sports and our intramural sports, and, uh, this slide was used when we're trying to get the funding for this. Uh, it demonstrates how many, um, students we, uh, expect to serve, twenty-nine hundred, a fifty percent increase in usage. Public events such as Greek Week Olympics, Anthony's Walk, phys ed classes, St. Jude's Up Till Dawn events, et cetera. So, it really is about usage more than any NCAA requirement, so I wanted to identify that. Just, if you can note, this was the building that, when we first conceived the track, we wanted to build. We don't have the funding for that, so that's why we don't have bathrooms. But we do have an idea that I'd like to show tonight about an interim plan in between the building of the track and something grand like that. Oh, I'd like to talk about parking. I showed this slide last time, I just put the math on here. Our present parking is 2,557 spaces on campus. When the Dyson Center construction is complete, there'll be another 100 spaces. Right now, that's used as staging for the construction. We expect to lose around 30, Joan? Around 30 spaces in this project. So a net increase from, for the last two years of 70 additional spaces at the end of the two projects. Right now, with 70 fewer spaces than we'll have then, are, at peak, are at 70% utilization of our parking inventory. So we don't believe we need to add parking to make up the 30. Okay, so here's the idea to address issues for bathrooms that aren't down there. There was mention of PA system without a front end. So what we'd like to do is put a comfort station here, small building, which, that's the constant, conceived appearance of it. And then, an equal building over here, which would have things like network, connectivity, scoreboard, ice maker for injuries and that sort of thing. A small set of bleachers, home and away, with some brick patios and a record board. This is an interim plan between this-
And when you get funding for the-
When somebody pays for the big buildings.
Which may not be in, in my lifetime, but that's okay.
So, I was hoping to get some reaction to that interim plan to see if it sounds right to you guys.
I guess the, like, in terms of the bathrooms for however many people you have there. If you're gonna bring in some porta-johns also.
What, what this would generate is, the, the way the bathroom configuration is, we'd add four unisex bathrooms to be used on a regular basis, you know, available. That's about, I, I don't think we brought in many more porta-johns than that for the tournament?
No, if there's any large event, we could bring in those nicer portable bathrooms. But this would, this would serve the needs of the, you know, 99% use.
Utilities are, what we propose to do is, we have an on-campus distribution center. We would bring water down from the main, that's up in John Winslow Boulevard at the top of the hill. And sewer, there's sewer in that, there's a pumping station in that parking lot just across from the top of the hill. I just have to figure out how I get across that rock knob to that station. But those are relatively simple, they are, we're, we're working to incorporate those. It would be a small self-contained pump station down at the lower level. And the, the water system, we know we can bring it down because AT&amp;T is down that road. There's a few other things that come down that road, so we know that, that we have the ability to, to run a water line. So, to Justin's point, it, it gives us a place to, to basically have restrooms available for anyone who's down there, and then also a space to, to, to run our PA system, to have a, 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 a sort of like a, I don't wanna say a medical facility, but a cooled-
First aid.
First aid station, plus some other benefits on that other building. So, I, I think we listened to you folks, and, and after watching the way the, the tournament went, those were some of the things that kind of people wanted to, to see added as improvements.
One other note on this rendering, you can see how we lowered the retaining wall.
Yeah, you mentioned you're only gonna do a six-foot and then cut it back.
Yes.
So, all right, we'll see what the board thinks as we go around later. Thanks for the update. Kristen?
Okay, well, they did a great job. Thank you for keeping it as brief as possible, given the information you were sharing. It's on for its first public hearing this evening, secret review for type one action. Staff had recommended at the prior meeting that the planning board circulate their intent to be lead agency, so that circulation did take place last month, and to date, no objections have been received. Unfortunately, for their time schedule, we could not advise that the board act on secret yet. There's still the open 30-day window. And so, at this point, staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing and adjourn it to next month, and then defer action with comments. Planning department-wise, I, my comments still remain relatively small, except for that note about the parking and sort of legalizing the use of that. I apologize, but, you know, it's better to square that up sooner than later.
I won't tell you what the town attorney said.
Yeah, I'm not gonna even. You're welcome. Thank you, and you're welcome. And actually, appreciate the, the update about the comfort stations and the restrooms. I know that that sort of has been being developed, and you shared that with us this evening. It hasn't been fully vetted by staff here yet, but we'll continue to review those updates as they come in. We also met with the applicant subsequent to us providing them all of our comments, prior to them being able to digest all of them. So again, it's, it's moving along kind of concurrently, the review with their making new submissions, and, and trying to address all the comments they're receiving. So, Andy obviously also reviewed the application, and that's it for me.
Great, thanks, Kristen, and Andy.
Yeah, so they're, you know, they're, they're doing a great job, you know, plugging away at the comments. They've addressed quite a few already. As John said, we had some comments about the SWIP, like to see those redressed. Sounds like they're well on their way to that. I think the comfort stations are a good idea. Unfortunately, that adds another layer of review for them. They'll have to go to the health department for a review and approval of those. I guess I, I, I wonder about the number of restrooms provided, if four is enough? I, you know, or if it's worth adding hurdles, you know, I don't know. That's a, just a thought. But something you can kind of answer later, I guess. The only other thing I would like to see, you, you talked through the, the bus staging and unloading procedures in your response. I'd like to see that put on the plan, and then have it demarcated on there where-
We, we actually heard you, and we are planning on making a submission Monday. I actually have a copy here with me tonight that does show a variation on that, and shows paths for students and other things. We, we do listen to you, Andy.
You said Monday? No.
Yes, yes.
Monday, okay, well, so the deadline is actually Tuesday, so you do have an extra week if you need it.
An extra day.
Extra day.
No, 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 the 28th is the submission deadline.
The 28th?
Correct.
I blew that one.
That's all right.
Don't tell him.
I know, right? I shouldn't have said anything.
So we'll, it, it'll just be more developed, but I, what we probably will do, we'll submit the SWIP, because I'd like to get Andy's major comments off the table.
That'd be great.
Works for me, I won't be here, so that, that works. That checks out.
Well, it's an easy submittal, it's electronic format, so alls I gotta do is submit it.
All right. Let's see, forget if Carol will get this all.
Uh, not this go-around, but-
Were you concerned about plastic runoff and stuff? I think you answered that last time, where they have these catch bases.
Yes.
Yep, and just for your benefit as well, we did have a short discussion about that Tuesday. And, you know, basically, the, we're using standards that are available, which they really aren't standards available. So we're using the best information that we have readily available to us, based on, did I say that okay, Andy?
Yeah, because microplastics is kind of an emerging contaminant that we don't really have. You know, we know it's a problem, but we don't really have good answers or standards on how to manage it.
All right, thanks. This is on for a hearing, so I move the, open the public hearing?
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, motion passes for zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the Marist track? Anyone on Zoom? Could you unshare your screens this time, so I can see if anybody's waving on Zoom there? Seeing now, I move adjourn the public hearing to June 20th, 2024.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we can.
Propose, motion passes for zero.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, now we're going around for Thomas, let's start with Sharon.
I'm curious about how many participants you had in the 11 teams for the softball tournament?
Oh gosh, I don't know how many are on a women's softball team, but there would be at least three teams there at one time.
Okay, so then, fast forward to the track section, how many participants would you have at one time? Because I think the bathrooms are light.
Yeah, so in an event, I'm not proposing this interim plan be used in an event. It would be for your daily use, for the teams that are, you know, practicing down there, the clubs, the intramurals. In an event, we'd have to bring in portable bathrooms like we did for that softball tournament.
May, that, actually, that's a good point, and maybe we need to show a reserved area for where they would be placed.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
I agree.
And now that we have till the 28th, we can get time to draw that square.
Especially if you're filling that area between-
Well, there's those brick areas that, that make sense.
You're putting stands in between those two-
Yes.
Buildings, so I don't know if there's enough room in there still for other things. You want them off the side? All right, you'll figure out a place for it by, by the next meeting, then. Anything else, Sharon?
No, that was it, thank you.
All right, Cole?
This might have been mentioned last time, but handicap parking aisles must be eight feet wide. And I think you guys know that.
The engineer revisited that, they're, they're not New York engineers, so they designed them according to the standard, which is, on other places, it's nine and five, in New York, they're eight and eight. So it, it did get resolved to eight and eight.
Okay, okay, yep. And then, I don't see it on your plans here, but right now, there's a shed on that property, correct? And it's kind of like off to this-
Yep, there is, there is a building there, it is on all the plans, that remains.
So it's remaining, you're not-
We're not touching it.
Turning that down, okay, okay. All right, sounds good, that's all I had.
All right, Peter?
I think they're on the right track.
I don't know.
Thank you, oh my god. What are you, you were practicing with Kristen, or what?
Anything else? I guess the only thing I felt that we brought up is the, is there a view shed from across the river with the lighting and, and such? I don't know if that's something that's... There's houses across there, I don't know if they're, what the standard is on that.
So, as part of the environmental review, I believe, and I'd have to confirm, that we circulated it to the SAS community, scenic area of statewide significance, we pulled that one out. And we actually reached it, I actually did reach out to Department of State for another project within the past year, so I was able to retrieve a contact. So we sent the information off, we didn't receive any comments to the identified person who we were supposed to communicate with. That said, they also did provide two forms of a lighting plan or two distances. And so, the light drop-off is pretty significant. And the technology and the ability to kind of focus the lighting was, was significant to their planning, and so-
Our new submittal shows different light levels, one for competition, one for normal. And then, the, the lighting plan itself has been accommodated, because remember, ours field is up here, and the river and everything else is down below. And it's, it's very strictly controlled into our site. So I think the new lighting plan that you receive will probably address those concerns. And, and I think if you recall from the last meeting, it's counterintuitive. It probably hurts Andy and I more than most guys, but the higher the light is, the less the glare and the more ability it is to focus on the, the target. So, our lighting levels are about 100 feet, I think. And that enables them to focus and, and have a star, a sharp contrasting cutoff at the embankment above the river, best way to say it.
Yep.
And I know that you had potentially initiated consultation. I know we circulated for lead agency purposes to Metro North, I don't know if there's been any further-
Haven't been able to get ahold of-
Yeah, we didn't receive any comments.
But it, it does, our, our new lighting plan does address lighting at the track, which is, in most of the cases, it's virtually zero, so.
So they're probably okay with it, but should hear back from them at some point, hopefully. All right, I guess we're good to go then.
Move the planning board, defer action on this application, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received, town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through 10.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, very much, thank you very much.
Have a good night. We'll see you next month. Next up is the law officer, Gillian Cantor. Hacklack Sack Road, I'm a big fan.
Welcome, guys. It's your first appearance, I believe.
Good evening, Jason Lestrick from JL Architecture.
Omear Gill.
So, we're, we're here before you tonight. Mr. Gill has, is looking to purchase 2186 New Hacklack Road, which was formerly Paula's Public House. He has received zoning board approval for the change of use from restaurant to office. And we're here before you tonight because we're looking to upgrade the existing gravel parking lot that is there, that's a bit of an eyesore. And we're proposing to, on our original plans that we submitted, we showed 19 parking spaces. And based on the comments that we received from the board, and working with New York State DOT, we have already revised and addressed the questions that, or the comments that were given to us. And we're actually gonna be reducing it down to 13 parking spaces instead of 19. And it's gonna be pushing it back away from the road a little bit, so we're not right at the property line. And with that, we have, we originally showed six lighting poles for the parking lot. By reducing it to 13 spaces, we only now need four park, light poles. So that reduces the required lighting. And we didn't show landscaping on the original submission because there's existing landscaping in front of Paula's. But at this point with the comments, we are gonna be proposing some landscaping at the entrance, where the throat of the driveway is, to kind of buffer the, the side parking spaces. We're proposing a new sidewalk along the side of the building, because right now, it's kind of a mixture between asphalt paving, some old curbing that's there, and a little bit of a concrete curb. So rather than to keep it looking kind of like an eyesore, we're proposing new concrete walkways with new curbing. And a lot of the comments that we received were, we realized that it was, we were missing a lot of information off the drawings. Time was of the essence for us, because Omear, or Mr. Gill, is, the, the purchase of the property is pending on the site plan approval. So we wanted to get in front of you as soon as possible to at least get the conversation started. And the comments received are very basic. I mean, we looked at Eric's, the comments from Eric Holman, an engineer, and a lot of them were redundant and overlapped. So, when you really started looking at the, the comments, there wasn't much. And it's really stuff that we knew we had to do, like to mention the parking spaces, show the parking lines, the handicap spaces, curb details, asphalt details. Those were this kind of basic information, or details that we knew we were gonna have to show. And like I said, we just didn't have time at the moment to beat the four o'clock deadline to get everything into it, to get on the agenda. But we have already updated and addressed all the comments. And the question about the, the grass area that is not going to be parking, we are going to seed it and make it all grass, and nobody will be parking on, on the grass area. And we talked, in a conversation with Mr. Holman, to prevent that, there's boulders that are around the existing parking lot now. We're gonna propose to move those up to the property line, so nobody can cross over onto, onto Mr. Gill's property.
So no more flea markets there?
Yeah, and, yes. And that's really the, the project in the last, I know there was a comment about the garbage. The existing garbage enclosure is very, I mean, it's an eyesore, it's a, like a stockade fence. We're taking that out, we have no need for a dumpster. It's an office. We're gonna have a private pickup for garbage and recycling. And that's gonna be housed behind the office, there's a fenced-in area already there where the grease trap is, so it'll be out of sight. And basically, when it's garbage day, it'll be rolled out to the curb. Yep. And that's, that's, I think, everything that we have, and-
Okay, great, great to see, see an empty building reused. So let's go to Eric.
Let's see, thank you, Jason, that covered a lot of things we talked about. For the court's benefit, there's a secret type two action, so there's no further environmental review required. It's pretty minimal in terms of land changes. The proposed, the, the plans, indeed, they, they are, they, they were rushed in, and they are missing a lot of standard information. That said, Jason's right, a lot of it is, is pretty straightforward and could be provided. They are looking, they are hoping to get a condition approval, and having discussed it, if they're willing to, what they've described about accommodating the more up-of-the-air questions like the, the trash and treatment of the highway right-of-way boundary, and the grass seeding, for planning's purposes, that, that would seem, it would seem amenable to a condition approval if the board was comfortable with those responses. I guess the only thing for the discussion by the board, Jason covered a couple of them for you to consider, the, the trash and the highway buffering, because we do want to separate the highway from, from that, that other area. Oh, the, the changed building entry location technically. The, the board, that could be amenable to an architectural review or not, that's the board's discretion. It sounds like they, they will need to adjust a, a walkway to approach it. But you, you should advise the applicant whether or not they, you can either choose to request elevations or to waive the architectural review.
So you, yeah, so pretty much, you're not changing it much.
Yeah, I have, I have a picture up. Let me see if you can-
See, I think conditional could be better.
See that?
Yeah, the, we'd be amenable to conditional if you're comfortable with the responses that they're providing. It would just be a matter of showing, showing, with that direction, showing those things on the plan for staff review. Or you could have them come back and show it to you.
We're pretty much trying to move the door from the corner of the building to where there was already a cutout from a car driving into the building. So it's, that makes- there was already a cutout from a car driving into the building. So it's pretty simple in my, yeah, in my non expertise.
And Mr. Gil, you're also needing to get into the space as soon as possible.
Correct. The building we're at now is being sold, closing scheduled for July 11-ish. So the quicker this is done, the quicker I can close, quicker I can renovate. And I don't have to find temporary housing, which does, which is not good for a law firm. Yep.
The board does have some comments from the engineer. And I will point out that the Health Department, which had some significant questions about a previous application, has indicated that there's, there doesn't seem to be any need for their further review. And I believe the county issued a no, a local concern. They didn't have any comments. And the DOT comments, those could be, the DOT permit would be a condition of approval in any case. But I know Andy has some comments.
Yep. He's next. All right.
Yeah. So again, you talked about a lot of our comments already. A couple of things. If you're, you are adding new curbs, that does have an impact on drainage. So we we will want to make sure that the site drains properly. Obviously, probably back to the back.
Correct.
Glad to see you're going to be seeding and grassing the existing gravel area. Looking for some notes about decompaction to make sure it actually grows. I do think that we would, it would be beneficial to have some sort of a barrier around the parking area to make sure people don't drive off into the into the grass area. Perhaps parking bumpers, something, something simple would be fine.
We're going to be proposing curb stops along the grass area.
Okay. Fine. On that, I agree. I think this is, this is in a good place for a conditional approval.
And I just want to add real quick. I just put a picture up of the existing building. And I believe where you see that little bump out between the windows, that is where the the person previously drove through. And that is where we're proposing to put, relocate the entrance door.
Was that a recent accident?
About, it was about a year or two ago.
I remember when it happened.
Yeah, the, yeah.
All right.
The person was under.
There is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep. The, you open the public hearing at this time?
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0. Anyone in the room wish to comment on the law office of Gillen Cantor? Or on Zoom? You can unmute yourself. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0. Let's go around for comments. Peter?
Just one quick question. In Mr. Lestrick's letter regarding the site, we're proposing a new asphalt paved parking area approximately 600 square feet. You, maybe there's a typo here. I mean, the parking spaces are nine by eighteen.
Did I say 600?
Add a zero, add a zero to that.
Yeah, six thousand. Sorry. Typo.
That's right. Thanks.
And it's actually going to be less because that was for the 19 spaces. So now we're down to 13.
Yeah, it comes to 2,106.
All right. Thanks, Peter. Anything else? Nicole?
There's really not too much here, but just to reiterate, lighting should be downlit. Anything that you have should not exceed 2,700 to 3,700, 3,000 Kelvin, sorry. And ultimately, it didn't look like it. But again, at the property line, it should be 0.2 K or less. So, okay. But that's really all I had.
Anything, Sharon?
No, I was going to ask about the lighting, but Nicole covered that.
Okay. Well, I did have a lighting question. Is it a big tall telephone pole light is being removed?
So the lights on the pole will be removed. The pole is a central Hudson pole.
Yeah.
But we'll take the lights off of it and decommission them.
Yeah, that's good. Because there was a neighbor across the street that shines in his windows.
Yeah, and they're, they're no use to us where we're having a parking lot, the proposed parking lot.
Yeah, it'll just be lighting the grass.
Right.
Okay, good.
You can see the deer.
Good to see that go. Good to see the building reused, as I say. Do you have any updated use for that whole backyard patio area that just integrated into?
It's just going to be left as is for now. We have two little puppies at the office. They're gonna, you know, they're gonna run in there for a while.
Around the fence that's fenced into. And the last question I had was like, what kind of, is there a fence or any kind of landscaping between you and the house next door in south?
So right now, they, they're, I don't know if it's.
There's a fence.
There's a fence between the two properties right now. It's not an opaque fence, but there is a chain link fence that somebody had put up there. I don't know if it was Paula or the neighbors.
Are you sure it's chain linked or not?
Yeah, right. It goes from the beginning, it is chain link fence, and then it goes to a wood stockade fence.
I know the neighbors were concerned about noise and lighting and splurge into their.
Yes. So the good thing is, it's not going to be, they're not going to have the noise that that the restaurant used to make.
So probably no light spillages either at night.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I'm not sure if that's Paula put that fence up or if the neighbors did. But there is a fence between the two properties.
Okay, that probably.
I'm pretty confident the neighbor put that up.
All right, I guess that's good then.
Okay. I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequately and completeness inclusive of not limited to the following one through 10.
Could we, you said type two? You said it was a type two as well.
I just granted conditionals like that.
You don't necessarily need to.
You don't necessarily need the termination.
In that case, is it seconded?
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 4 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Next up is shops at Campus Center. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Tough site.
So I will catch the board up on our status since our last meeting. Let me just share my screen here. Okay, we've been through the the overview, so we know where we're located. We're immediately east of Maris College. We are familiar with the building. At this point, we know we have two buildings plus the fuel canopy split across two separate parcels. We know the existing building is an eyesore. So this is the existing survey. We've gone over that. So here's our plan that we presented to you at our last meeting. Several pinch points were found on the site. We know we had traffic issues. So we went back and we sat down with staff internally. And we've now redesigned the site by reworking some of the parking, reducing parking, and adding additional pedestrian pathways through the site. So this is our new site plan. I'll just touch on some of the larger items that have changed with the site plan. The first being that this row of parking here that you see on the left, which is the west side, has been changed to parallel parking. And that has really opened up that side. We have integrated new walkways through the center of it. And then we've also integrated walkways around Building B. We've modified some of the parking in that area, too. And I'll just blow up some of these areas now. So just to touch on, you can see side by side comparisons of how we've kind of changed this site. So again, moving to a parallel parking here on the west side of the site really opens up the pathway there. It also allowed us to kind of curve and manipulate the sidewalk coming across the intersection from Maris. We rotated it up. And now that crosswalk, instead of sort of walking along with traffic, actually crosses traffic properly like it should. We don't have people backing up into it. So the pedestrian pathway is a lot safer. You'll see some of the handicap has obviously moved away from those areas. Those areas actually didn't meet current handicap slopes and and those sorts of things. They were away from the building. So doing this actually enabled us to make pathways that are accessible from our new sidewalk. Again, goes across the pathway and then around the building, we can make those accessible routes. We've done some preliminary shots to verify we can do that. We will provide final shots once we have all of those numbers. But it looks like all of these things will work. Then just kind of move into the east side again, just a side by side comparison, so we can sort of see what happens here. So I'll start at the top here. As you can see, our entrance off of North Road, we've manipulated that, changed the parking a little bit, just so that we could still have our accessible parking. We've eliminated some parking to make that access drive wider, safer. We don't have people backing up into our driveway access anymore. We've manipulated some of the parking by, and that hasn't really changed anything. We've used actually the fact that we have open area off the site to allow us to have a handicap parking for Red Cap. The cross slopes actually between the two handicap parking spots that we have, actually, you can't get an accessible route from one side to the other. Building B is actually much higher than you would imagine on the site. That building actually sits up. Even though the site slopes from west to east upward, almost all of the area around that building is almost impossible to reach accessibility slopes. And then you compound that with the fact that we have the existing concrete pad in the front of the automotive, and that can't move either. That concrete pad is where all the underground fuel is. So we've had to relocate some of this parking. Some of that parking that you see along the side, again, just it wasn't possible. So that's why we've relocated this. Other improvements include the fact that a lot of the parking that was nonconforming and ended up off of our property into the grass area has been eliminated. We've now gone ahead and curbed that so that we can prevent that from happening in the future. And again, it really opens up the pathway on the south side of Building B. Here we have sort of the traffic flow pattern. We use the WB40 for fire truck analysis. You can see, so the fire truck can access off of North Road. It can access all sides within our property of Buildings A and B fully. The fire department has seen this, and I believe they're happy with it. The next slide you'll see here, this is the refuse truck. So the refuse truck also can make these movements. As of the time of this morning, Jonathan met with representatives from Royal on site, showed them the location that we're proposing to put the refuse container. And they've given us correspondence that says that they found it acceptable. So I've sent that to Kristen. Kristen's aware of it, but it'll obviously be included with any, you know, future submissions. Next, the the architecture of the building hasn't changed. We can touch on that a little bit more when we start looking at the architectural review. But that that has stayed the same. The only change actually, and let me, let me jump back real quick. One of the things that did change in the overall site plan is, one of the comments from the county, I believe, was to make this walk interconnect so it would serve all of Building A even at the ramp. And we actually were able to achieve that by, now, it's not accessible the entire way, but we do have a pedestrian access way, which they recommended, with a set of stairs here across what leads up to our raised platform for the small portion of tenant spaces here, but then does ramp down. So our access point for accessibility obviously would be this parking spot and up the ramp. But we do have pedestrian walking access all the way around the site now. And that act, that actually is now added in. You can kind of see it here. Here's the stair set down that comes around, gets out of the, around the new walk-in. And then that's represented in in a small change with the elevation. The other things that have happened since we last met, we have been in front of the ZBA. We received the variances for the walk-in, both for the setback and the small area increase. We received the variances for the new monument sign locations. We, there was a small issue, I guess, with notifying the public about the remainder of the variances, specifically sign areas, and the signs that were put up by our tenant at the fuel station. So we are going to have to go back to them for the signed sizes. But the position, which was what was, I think, imperative for us to seek any kind of conditional approval tonight, that was approved and our area variances were approved. So the monument sign question is really just the size. At this point, we are allowed to place them in the locations that we have shown on the plan. We're still going to go after those variances, and we'll we'll receive them next month. But again, I would like that to sort of be a condition of approval, since it's sort of minor. If we don't get it, well, then our side changes say change. But we're still going to put the monuments in the locations that we intend. I want to just touch on a couple of things before we get into the architecture of it, based on Kristen's staff letter, just to jump in front of it just a little bit. Some of the things that I'd like to touch on, I think, was, one, we talked about the refuse enclosure. We will be, you know, one of the other things that we'll be asking of the board is, you know, to allow us to not make a masonry enclosure. You know, the the fact that this is a fenced enclosure is what's allowing us to actually build it in that location. Because if we were to provide a masonry enclosure in that location, it would be on top of the DOT's right of way. So the DOT has a drainage, not right of way, drainage easement across that back. So our entire plan hinges upon the fact that this is actually a refuse enclosure that's composed of a fence, essentially. Now, it's completely out of the sight of anybody visiting the property, and it's to the rear. We can't build a masonry enclosure again, because then the DOT, if they ever needed to do work there, it would be in their way. The fence, we can actually construct outside of the boundaries of their easement and still meet everything. We do have correspondence from the DOT that says they're okay with that conceptually. The, there is a comment here regarding the highway work permit. The only thing I would just want to clarify is, we will file the perm and get conceptual approval, but the actual permit itself comes later. So I want to make sure that's not contingent with chairman's signature, just the conceptual approval from DOT. Because the perm requires contractors, bonds, all sorts of things. And that typically just, and this is, again, just sort of a housekeeping thing, but that typically comes after chairman's signature when we get more towards building department. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, and it seems like they're entertaining your process. This was similar to a discussion that happened with an earlier applicant. So it's not like a hard no or anything like that. So we understand that it's under review, and I think that we could certainly proceed, although I would be hesitant to be signing off on any sort of like permitting until we obviously retain that. But we understand you need the plans probably to go forward.
Right.
It's, it's a catch 22. Honestly, they used to, they used to actually issue a conceptual letter, and now they don't really do that anymore. So, but yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. They don't do that anymore. You get a very informal email.
Which I still have to ask three times for, but you know.
Right.
Because they know I won't go away.
What else did we, I did, I touched on the preliminary spot elevations. Again, I we believe we can make this concept work with the accessibility. It seems like it's very feasible at this point. So I would ask that that would be a condition of approval, just the final shots. Kristen asked that I discuss the the baller locations and the colors. The ballers will be all black. And then once we show our architectural review, you'll see the materials. I think that you'll be happy with that. The other item Kristen asked that I discussed was the here located on Red Cap Southern Side. We are reconstructing what we affectionately refer to as the shed. But basically, all it is, is they built basically a lean-to they enclosed for their air compressor for their systems. So what we're actually going to do is do a real, you know, wood constructed stud wall with materials to match the building. There was a comment regarding the detail. It's actually detailed in the elevations. You see it in the elevations. So it's, it is fairly obvious what it is. So it's here. It matches the exterior of the building. We're going to do a metal canopy roof on top of it. It'll have a door that's painted to match the wood look siding. So again, if if they really need a detail, we can certainly provide that, but that's more of a construction detail.
No, I think it was just lost on me because it actually does blend in so well, and it doesn't stick out with a sore thumb. So, thank you.
No problem. And then the last thing I want to touch on, this is probably one of the bigger items, is the lighting. So the lighting does spill over the property line. But if you had, familiar with the site, we do have the ATM there. And that is, and it's because of the ATM Safety Act. There's only two ways to achieve the lighting levels that we need for that particular location to get it out that far. 60 feet out, I have to have a certain level of foot candles.
Where's that located?
I'll get back to the site plan here. So the ATM is located right here. Okay, so the entrance to the T E G.
Okay.
Okay. So now 60 feet out, pretty much brings you right to our property line. If you're familiar with the site now, there's sort of a canopy that goes over, and there's two very large, very obtuse floodlights that stick out. And that's how they deal with that now.
Is that on the side facing Premier Medical, the doctor's area?
No, that's, that's facing.
Building A.
If it points towards, if it points towards right A.
South toward A.
Correct. Correct. So so this is at, yeah, exactly. It points out towards the the drugstore. So what happens now is they have two large floodlights that have glare. They're uplit. I mean, you can see the bulbs. It's kind of obnoxious, honestly, at night. So we're, that's the. So we're, that's the, that's really the only way to achieve 60 foot out when you're that low, because we can't go any higher than the building. So what we did was we put a pole light on our property, but we had to put it as close to our property line as possible in order to achieve that 60, that 60-foot limit. So it does make us really bright at the property. Now, again, this is state law, there's nothing I can do about it, so I have to meet it. I will, I've talked to the lighting designer, they think we can tweak it down a little bit, but not very much. So we're never going to meet the point two at that property line. So Kristen had mentioned.
Cut off in a way.
Yeah, even the cutoff, it, I can't stop, even if you cut the light at the bottom, because the pole has to be a certain height, it's still going to leak out the back a small amount. So we actually have the LED shot as, I think we have the pattern as tight as we can get it. But I will review it to minimize as much as possible.
Just concerned that it's not shining, I mean, it's a high-traffic area, that it's not shining in anybody's eyes.
No, it, 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 it's shielded, it's fully shielded. So again, you won't see the light, but the light on the ground, which is what we're talking about with the foot candles, it does spill over the property line. The glare is actually very minimal, but the actual light content coming off the property is higher than code allows. So my question is, does the board have any?
No. The answer is, and because I'll just stop you there, is if you can't meet the code, it's a variance. So we would probably just add that to your impending next.
If we can get that onto the next, I mean, we're going, so, and then if that could just be another condition, that would be, I think, great. But other than that, I think, you know, we have received some other minimal comments, I think even from engineering and all that, that were pretty minor. I think the largest of those was grease trap involved, which we have recently cleaned. We will send verification for the one that is actually within a tenant space. That one is existing, but we will make sure that that's all covered. But I don't think there's any other major comments at this point.
All right, thanks.
Open up to the board.
You've covered a lot. Kristin.
Okay, yeah, so it's on for a public hearing this evening, and for secret purposes is a type-two action on for amended site plan and architectural review. Brandon did a great job of going through many of my comments, if not all of them. And so, you know, at this point, staff feel pretty comfortable, if the board is comfortable, with a conditional approval at this time. I, again, just wanted to reiterate that we did meet with staff, or excuse me, we did meet with the Fairview Fire District, and we addressed any of their concerns about access. So that has been taken care of, especially on the western part of the property. The change to parallel parking seemed to address, in addition to reducing the number of parking spaces in that area, seemed to address a lot of those comments. They also, the Fairview Fire District is actually happy with some of the other changes, because there is actually better flow through the property now than there was previously. So their, their concerns have been addressed. There was the conversation and consultation with DOT regarding the drainage. So again, the drainage easement and the placement of the refuse with chain link enclosure, so that is something the board would have to, you know, weigh in on accordingly. You know, it is relatively tucked back in there at this point in time.
It's hidden.
Yeah, you know, without getting into the details or the additional discussions with like properties to the north and trying to work out access and placing it elsewhere. I know that, I think that we actually had talked a little bit about that in your very first meeting before you made a submission. So I went back to my notes, but, so this seemed to be the most appropriate location for that, for what that's worth. And there are so many improvements that are being made, so take that for what it is. And so staff is recommending at this point that the planning board open the public hearing, and then, you know, close public hearing, adopt a secret for type-two action, adopt a resolution to grant site plan, conditional site plan, and then we conduct architectural approval. And then I just wanted to make a point as a matter of record, that, you know, essentially the applicant is accepting any risk at this point, if you will, by going to the ZBA with a conditional approval. So if there was something that were to come out of the discussion at this point in time that would require a change to your site plan, you've kind of already received your conditional approval, so that would cause you to have to like come back to the planning board. You know, I don't know that that's necessarily going to be the case, since you've already had the initial face time with them, and you've gotten the locations locked in, it's a matter of the size of the signs. And now we're going to be adding the lighting, I don't know. I mean, you're doing everything that you can pretty much to address that, all concerns related to the lighting and the ATM. So just wanted to make sure that that was very clear, you know, and that would be a part of your conditional approval, is achieving and receiving those variances from the ZBA.
Yeah, no, that makes total sense. I mean, my thought process in asking for that to be a condition is, I have to go back, and if I don't get the variances, I'm going to be here another month anyway, right? So my, so I'll ask for the conditional approval and keep my fingers crossed.
I'll just mention on the lighting, when we reviewed the Wells Fargo Bank, we did review the state lighting standards for ATMs. And I seem to recall, it would be worth checking what those regs are, because I think that the standard for the 60-foot distance you mentioned was around five foot candles, or seven or eight. And I know what's shown here is 12 or 13.
Yeah, the problem is, is it's actually not the 60-foot that we're losing out on. We, I mean, we could, that light could be very minimal, you're right, at the 60 feet, but it's that 30-foot marker and in-between that we're missing in the middle, because I wanted to really lamp down the stuff that's on the building shooting out. So that one's a little brighter, the pole light's a little bit brighter, which actually bleeds off the property more, so that my middle at my 30-foot marker meets. So you're 100% correct, it is brighter than a knee-bee right at the property line, directly under the light, but we're kind of in that happy medium where the two lights are really meeting in the middle, is the, is the design concept.
All right. Thanks. Andy?
Yeah, most of our comments have been addressed. I'm going to sound like a broken record, I'm really not a fan of the refuse location. I know it's the best spot you can find, but I feel that access to that location is difficult, and getting out is even more difficult. Truck has to back 180 degrees around the building and not be able to turn around as you get back to the fueling pumps. I'm willing to accept that, but I think that we need to put some limits on when the trucks can be there.
I was just going to say, how often?
And that was actually documented in a memo we received late this afternoon, so I apologize, I didn't share that with the board, just so you're aware.
So they, they do already come before 8:00 AM, before hours. So what they also said in their letter is, if they do have an issue where there are cars parked and they're having difficulties, they'll adjust their schedule to come earlier, and they indicated that in this memo that I sent to Kristen. One thing I would like to point out, if there are no vehicles parked in those handicap spots directly in front of North Ave Nails, Fifth Ave Nails, they can do a multi-point turnaround in that small section. So it is possible to do. So it's, I said multi-point, not three-point.
Maybe you want some bollards there.
So there are bollards there, and so, yes.
Let me also add that when I met with this gentleman today from Royal Carding, they said that there are other, if they, if this proves, they think they can do this, but if it proves difficult over time, they have other garbage container options with smaller trucks that can be removed from, I guess the truck backs in and does like a back load. I'm not sure of the equipment, but he said there are other options if they find this difficult, which is why he was willing to accept this and then work with us if, to find another solution.
And that's fine, I do think it should be a note on the plan.
Yes, we can work through the language for that, yeah.
Yeah. Did you, I mean, just looking at the aerial, there's a fence between that trash enclosure and a couple parking spaces and trash on the adjacent property. If you remove this, I mean, did you think about having just a pass through the fence, a gate through the fence?
We would need an easement process through.
Right, you would need an easement from the adjacent donor. It would just make everything a lot safer, did you look at that possibility?
Well, I believe that ownership has just changed. So I'm not sure, I think Maris just bought that property. So I'm not sure that that's actually something that would be feasible at this point, because I don't know what their intent for that property is.
Ken? All right. We can explore that, I guess, with Maris. Let's see, let's see, anything else, Andy?
No, that's it.
All right, I move, we open the planning board, the planning board opens the public hearing. Opens the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Anyone wish to comment on this application in the room or on Zoom?
No.
Does not appear to be. In that case, I move the planning board close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes four to zero. Or on the board for comments, I'll start with Sharon.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anything, Peter?
I think what you've done is very clever, nice job.
Thank you.
Nicole.
Yeah, I don't have any comments either, it looks good. It's definitely going to be an improvement, so.
Thank you.
And that's my biggest comment, is thanks for taking us on.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate your encouragement, it means a lot. This is, this is a big project financially and contractually and everything else in between, so the fact that the town is behind us, it gives us great confidence. So hope that we can bang it out before winter, fingers crossed.
For the trash enclosure, would there be slats in the chain link at least?
We can absolutely do it.
And I was, just the last question I have is like, how many parking spaces got reduced?
I don't know the answer to that.
We went from like, well, we, I'm part of your team. They went from about 76, I think, to about 53, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's 53, 54. But it's still more than, I think it's several more than what was originally approved by zone.
I mean, a lot of your traffic is from the Maris kids, foot traffic and stuff, so.
Yes.
Goodness. All right.
I move the planning board hereby determine that the shops at Campus Center is a type-two action per Part 617 dash, 617 dot 5C1, requiring no further environmental review.
Move to the second.
Second.
Move to the second, for secret. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for shops at Campus Center, project subject to the following, respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, and send response to be reviewed by the planning department at the adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following, 1 through 9.
And then includes what we talked about for the.
Yeah, it's planning board comments, but I will make sure that it's included, and we'll discuss the language.
Yeah. We'll make sure the slats get in and the hours.
Yes.
And what Andy's concerned with. All right. Do I have a second for this?
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. And architectural review would be next.
Just share my screen again, so.
You've shown us a couple of times on that.
Yeah, you've seen, you've seen this, so I'll just kind of go over, I actually have physical samples of the materials. I'm just going to zoom, I mean, it's relatively the same throughout, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but I'll just kind of touch on the material. So the dark metal material that you're seeing will actually be the dark metal that you're seeing here.
You want me to just run that up to them?
Yeah.
So the dark metal that you'll see is shown there, the light metal material that you're seeing is the background metal material with the vertical siding panel to it. We have fiber cement accents, those are the dark gray that you're kind of seeing on the bottom of the fiber cements in the middle. And then there is, once we get to the, around the building, we also have light fiber cement in a larger board, and that's what you're seeing down here below, just zoom out here. So you're seeing some larger fiber cement boards, and then when we move across, just so the two buildings are integrated, you'll see that we have those same boards, just in a lighter pattern. That's the lighter fiber cement color that you're seeing. And then finally, going back, we have that wood look fiber cement accent. That's what you saw around the shed area, it's some of our accents around the tops of our building and inside our entranceway pop-outs.
That's the one in the middle of it.
That's the one in the middle, yep. It's kind of got a grain to it, a little bit of a variation in color, and it looks like a wood green panel.
I'm sure we talked about it, but there was no rooftop mechanical HVAC, right?
So, so we're moving a small amount of the HVAC to the rear of the site, it will not be visible. It's small, they're not large rooftop units. There's just the portion of the building here in the back where Fifth Avenue Nail is, that actually is a masonry building with a real wood roof structure, so it can support some minimal equipment that we'll have. Again, this is so far back, and we'll make sure that we place it so it's not visible from any of the three sides.
And there's some ground mounted stuff right there, Nick.
That ground mounted stuff there will be shielded by a new, we're doing a shadow box fence. And then the remainder of this building is a pre-engineered building that was designed, it can't support the mechanical equipment, so there won't be any on that rooftop.
Great. All right. Any comments from board members?
No, it looks good.
I mean, we accept architect as presented.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero, there, good to go.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
We hope you come shopping in our center next year.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next up is 8 Tucker Drive.
Finally made it back.
Finally made it back, a couple of years later. It's been a while, here in front of the DEC.
Yes, it has. Good evening, Ken Cusmento from LRC.
Amy Batane from LRC, we're here representing La Pura Real Estate for the proposed contractor's yard at 8 Tucker Drive. We're just going to kind of give a brief history refresher, since it's been a while since we've been here.
Yeah, it was looking nice.
Yeah.
Kind of looks good there.
So this is the project site, again, located at 8 Tucker Drive. We originally submitted to the planning board February of 2021. During some soil testing from September of 2021, we discovered some C and D material that's, we later, after coordinating with the DEC, it's part of the Vanda Water landfill. So since that time, we have been coordinating with the DEC on the design of the site. And we'll go with February of '21 versus '22, and then that brings us to our current design.
Where we are today. So what you see today is really an outgrowth of, as you know, a long time of working with the DEC and back and forth with staff a little bit here. We did a meeting about a month or so ago to update. But primarily, what the DEC has identified is, there's a cap, but it's not a cap. It's essentially the existing landfill, we can't touch it. So what they've agreed upon is that the presence of how we're putting the stone material above the, what is considering a cap, even though it's not a traditional cap, doesn't constitute as disturbance, because it's all being built above the grounds that are there. Everything we're proposing is above what's there. So it's a stone surface, there's a limited paving area. Amy's worked meticulously with the owner as well as the DEC for the, there are specific vehicles that are allowed to be on the gravel areas because of wheel loads, so that they don't have compaction and all these things. So that's all in the operating manual, there was a couple of questions about equipment. So there's, we're working on the number, but there's only one or two types of equipment that are allowed onsite. There will be remain onsite, where they exactly park at night, I don't know. It doesn't, it's really germane to the overall operation. As you can see, there, there areas off the pavement, the idea being the trucks would come in on the pavement, dump off onto the gravel, and that's when that equipment would take over moving any of the items. We originally proposed to pave the whole thing so that we could work with it better, but unfortunately, the way that works, then we need a stormwater permit for treating the stormwater, and we can't do that in a fill pad or a construction pad. So we're circle and egg, as we've been, chicken and egg, as we've been talking about. So that's where we are, where we've gotten pretty far along with the DEC, that's why we're back. They have the plans in front of them, we are aware, so we kind of got a little sidetracked on one of the comments. I know Chris, you brought up about the square footage of composting area, because they had asked us to identify areas for composting. So we put a number on the plan, and not realizing that, you know, your code is different than theirs, where we're only allowed 200 square feet of composting. We'll reduce that to show only the 200 square foot, so we are within the code area.
Are you going to be actually composting?
Are you going to be actually composting stuff?
There is minimal composting, yeah, and 200 square feet.
You can do it within the 200 square.
Yeah, that's, it's all we're going to be working with, so.
So we have, there's a question that Chrissy will still need to answer then, because it seemed like the composting that was in the code was residential composting only. So we'll, if you're going to reduce it, we'll need an opinion from her that it covers commercial as well as residential, but we'll cross that bridge.
Yeah, we can, and one of the things that, you know, we wanted to do is, you know, really just give you guys an update. We have the comments. We're not looking to really do anything tonight, but we wanted to have them. We're gonna meet with Chrissy and staff next week to kind of go back through some of these comments and rework the plans a little bit to now align with what town needs. And we'll go back to the DEC as we're getting there and, you know, get before you, probably won't be in front of you next month, just because of that timelines and the holiday in between to get everything together, but back in July.
All right. Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, one more quick thing, if you don't mind, because I skipped one slide and Amy will get mad at me. So one of the questions was with regard to the rail trail and the visibility of the rail trail. As you can see, there's a pretty healthy vegetative buffer that is there, that will remain. We're, it's between ninety-five and a hundred and forty-five feet, a hundred and forty-three feet from the rail trail. That is not going to change. We're not taking any of that out. We're not touching any of that natural dense vegetation. We're thirteen to fourteen feet higher than it. And, you know, in the pictures, and when you get out there, you know, these are fall, obviously, so there is some still leaf cover there, not pure winter conditions. But there is, you're pretty high up and you wouldn't really see anything there. Thank you.
All right. Krista?
Okay. Yeah. So thank you for that overview and kind of bringing the planning board a little bit up to speed. So just for the record, the project is on for a public hearing this evening, which was re-noticed, by the way, because two years had gone by since the last appearance before the planning board, so the applicant did take that initiative. It's on for a secret review recommendation, or secret review for an unlisted action. The planning board did declare its intent to be lead agency back in July 2021, and to date, no objections have been received. It's been a little while, so I think we're okay. It's also on for a recommendation to the town board for a zoning district change. That zoning district change would be from BSC to IL, which is a light industrial zoning district, site plan review, floodplain permit review, aquatic resource protection permit review, and I think that's it for now. And so, yes, as was acknowledged, there are, there are a number of comments I had. I went through kind of line by line in the full environmental assessment form that was provided, and also read through the PVE post-closure operation and maintenance manual report. It was an educational experience, if I might say, so. But, you know, there were, there were a number of comments, and actually, I was the one that flagged the 2,000 square foot, or 200 square foot code language and had brought it to Chrissy's attention. And so, yes, we were unable to make a clear determination one way or the other, and then she was also unfortunately out of the office today, so even after I had had a conversation with a member of your team prior to this evening's meeting, and I also didn't have time to follow up with counsel or our wetlands consultant ahead of the meeting. So I was juggling a little bit of that, but we, we understand that there's just a meeting that should take place offline. There's no reason to get into every single comment on the list right now. We'll get some clear direction for you about what would be permitted, recognizing that there's been an ample amount of time and work that's been put in with DEC at this point. I, so at this point, I, you know, really, there are a number of comments that we're still looking to have addressed, and I think, you know, we'll get there, but certainly staff is recommending that offline consultation. And then, you know, I would just like to ask them to, so I had given the planning board the option to adjourn June or July, I don't know, July then, okay? And then deferring action with comments at this time. And then I just wanted to point out a couple of other items, recognizing that you mentioned the rail trail proximity. I did confirm with DC, Dutchess County DPW, they had provided a written confirmation that they were satisfied, recognizing that you were maintaining an existing buffer. As previously created, I guess, I would say. And then Dutchess County Planning also was a matter of local concern, so no additional comments there as well. So once we kind of square up the uses intended on the property, obviously, you're bound by probably even more strict codes through DEC requirements, given the nature of the site. We would also just want to make sure or ensure that and usher our fire department and building department that you're meeting all of the code requirements for fire access in event of an emergency.
Yep.
Is the weight of a fire truck included in there?
Yeah.
And the, and the DEC's.
So that would be, okay. It can handle the fire truck, the gravel areas. The issues that they have are the repetitive use over an area is going to cause the dirt to compact in the cap. So the, the whole concept is mind-boggling in one way, because you can drive over the existing dirt there over and over, because it's not really a cap, but it's their version of a cap. So they're concerned with infiltration into the cap, which it does now, and the vehicular access across what is now the grass that's there. So the fire trucks can drive on it, it wouldn't affect them, but if they drove over it all twenty times, you would get ruts and the DEC doesn't want that.
Okay, got it. All right. Andy?
Um, we really don't have a lot to say on this one. Looking for DEC approval of the post-closure manual.
Yep.
Curious if you've had any discussions with the DEC. I realize that, you know, because there's no disturbance, technically, a construction speedies permit is required. Curious if you've had any discussions with the DEC about multi-sector permit coverage?
There, there is a discussion of that, whether we're going to be required to have that or not. That's currently under the last comment review from them, waiting for that answer.
All right. The town doesn't really have any discretion over that one. It's just really kind of a check-in-the-box to make sure that you're taking care of it. And then finally, there was a comment about the floodplain work, basically on the, on the, on the access drive. Just like to set up a, you know, an offline meeting with the floodplain administrator and myself to talk through that.
Yeah, this whole area of town is tough to work on. It's ill-dumped. It's just, things are. I don't know, Carol, if you'd looked at this any recently? I know you looked when you were working on the.
Yeah. For one, I just want to apologize about the one comment about the confusion with blading turtles. I was, we have many versions of this plan, so those were apparently an old version. That's why I apologize for that. So all the, the new plan is inclusive for the landing turtle protection. The one thing about that is we really think that there should be no activity on the site. Activity should be restricted from April fifteenth to October fourteenth. That's what DEC wants. But there's a lot of stuff going on inside the fence and stuff going on outside the fence, and the fact is that the habitat is immediately adjacent, just behind the site. So there's a lot of things to say, you know, if possible, or when.
Hey, Siri.
When possible.
Call Nancy Finn iPhone.
Hi, George. Nancy Finn.
Okay, George. We're gonna mute you. So the fence installation should go on during the, you know, restricted period and as well as the construction that's going on outside the fence, which is the sedimentation basins and the gas monitoring wells and the paving. So we'd all like that to stay in that timeframe.
Yeah, we, we can work to get towards that. We're going to be limited when the DEC tells us on some of those activities, like the wells, because that was not our requirement. That was a DEC requirement for an existing landfill that they have, they, they should have put them in when, when it was done, it was never done, and now they're requiring us to do it in order for us to do this.
Right, and with the DEC, the left hand might not know what the right hand is doing, but if the right hand says, hey, we got landing turtle issues, we should delay that until October fifteenth, that should not be.
We'll work through that, I would agree.
Right. I, I was a little confused with the, the, the cap, because the cap that is shown on the plans and the cap that is discussed in the PV post-closure manual are different.
Well, it, it.
So that's what I just would need an explanation about.
There's only one, there's no cap. All we're doing is putting orange construction fence down, which our detail doesn't show, describe the same way as PVE's is, then microfiber fabric, I believe it is, and then stone. And that's all we're doing, on top of the existing material. There is no cap. There is no official cap that is a designed landfill cap.
It's not a cap, yeah, it was just.
Correct. It's referred to that, because that's how the DEC refers to the existing ground that is there, as the cap.
Okay. The, the PVE manual says something about a twelve-inch compacted subgrade followed by a geotextile fabric horizontally laid, orange fence topped with twelve more inches of item four, compacted. So I'm, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll work through the detail with them, because, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, as long as it is, because one says one and one, so as long as we're, we're kind of in the same ballpark.
Yeah, there's no compaction of their cap.
As long as the DEC is fine with all of that. Yeah, and the PV manual talks about, it's on DN, map Plan DN one, and it's actually on DS one, and again, it's different than what's in the, it just doesn't match. Limits of work should be clearly marked out in the field, especially limits to the gas monitoring wells, because we had some issues there before. I'd love to see some vegetative screening along where that culvert was replaced. This is what we were working on for two years back when.
Yeah, we didn't replace the culvert.
Right, and then the town.
Yeah, the town did.
The stream, the stream is flowing better now.
Right, and then the town replaced the culvert, right, and, but didn't do any of the things we were requiring of, you know, but we'd like to see maybe some screening there, just to, to put some screening back to the wetlands, to the north and the south of that.
Well, like we said in an offline meeting, we'll sit, we'll talk through what we can and can't do in those areas.
And there's just a couple of minor, minor comments, but that's, those are basically the big ones. Looks good, though.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
Yeah, so just, you know, again, taking a breath here, you know, it's, it, there's a lot going into this discussion, right? And there's been a lot of time and effort that's gone into this. So we want to recognize that they're also working with DEC constraints, not even constraints, just, you know, regulatory standards. And so we'll have to have a conversation. And apologies, Carol, I didn't have a chance to even like speak with you also this afternoon. But, yeah, they're, you know, I, I think that offline meeting will do, will do a lot.
Yeah, because the DEC is going to be running the show.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have been for three years here.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Well, seeing it move forward will make Joe happier, I guess. At least, at this point, I will be open to public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone remaining on Zoom or in the room who wish to comment on Eight Tucker Drive? Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Score on the board for comments. Start with Peter this time. Really have one comment. When did Section 210 looped up light industrial? And there are no permitted or uses or special use permits for composting? And I saw the, the comment from the zoning administrator proposed compost and organic, organic stumping area are prohibited for the following reasons. So I just want to get some clarification. You know, you've got the, an eight thousand square foot proposal here for composting. My concern is really about leachate. Don't know what's going into that compost pile. You know, if it's feasible to do this project without composting, you know, I would urge you to take a look at that.
And like we said, we're going to meet offline and we'll talk through that with Chrissy, both for code compliance and, and talk to our client as well.
Yeah, I'm saying, forget the code compliance. I'm, my concern is particularly with the nature of the site to begin with. You know, I'm not really sure that composting is a great idea at that location, so I'm just, just think it, think it over.
Yep.
Wait, thanks, Peter. Anything, Sharon? Nicole?
No, they're at the mercy of DEC, so there's not much we can, can do, so.
Yep. Was there, wasn't clear to me if there's vehicles that may store on the site, like trailers or whatever?
No. No, nothing, nothing to be stored on the gravel at all, other than the equipment that is approved. Right, so only on the asphalt, so maybe there's a truck parked in the asphalt till the morning, till they unload, but that's about it. There's no storage of multiple vehicles onsite.
What was this restriction I saw about high winds? I understand heavy precipitation, you don't want to be second.
There was a question, I don't remember where it is specifically, about high winds, but it has to do with, you know, the dust and movement of material through that.
Got it. If you're shoveling stuff, you can catch the wind. Navigate it. All right. And offline meeting with staff and move forward.
Okay. I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including and not limited to the following, one through twelve.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Couple of other adjournments we have, sixty-eight Van Wyten Road. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Casper Kill South Road Development. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Extra space self-storage. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Moves in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Metro Roofing Supply. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Lastly, washco, car wash. I move the public hearing be adjourned to June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. This time, I move we allow public comments on the remaining agenda items.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Anyone wish to comment on the remaining items? Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, now we got Lucas Grove Crossing coming back into town. Welcome back, guys. Thank you hiatus, but good to see the project up.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Lapew with Labelle Associates.
My name is Jimmy Nash, and I'm one of the owners of the property.
I think the board is familiar with this project. As we navigated it through the approval process through two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, it was slowed down by a combination of the pandemic and our ability It was uh slowed down uh by a combination of the pandemic and our ability during the pandemic to uh work with the adjoining property to secure a drainage easement. For this project. The project as you uh that's before you consists of thirty-two apartments. That are to the south of the Holiday Inn on Route nine and to the west of the Greenbrier condominium estate. Access to the property will be through an existing access easement off of Route nine that also leads to the Greenbrier uh property. I know it's getting late in the evening, so I'm not going to go into the full details of it, but I will kind of just show you the area that.
Remember there's access issues with the Greenbriers.
Yes, that's what I'm going to go into. So. If you recall on our drainage plan, the site itself has a. A gravelly loam throughout and a majority of the runoff of this site is going to consist of infiltration, but uh. From a uh using our good judgment, you always need to have an overflow associated with infiltration, uh no matter what your design is. And in our case, the nearest overflow was in this particular location, which was a catch basin on the Greenbrier property. We've spent the last two years working with Greenbrier. In various capacities and with their property management team, uh we attended numerous uh HOA meetings. And we had separate zoom calls with them as well. We've come to an agreement, uh which I've uh shared and forwarded to the board earlier this week when I received it, acknowledging that they'll accept the drainage easement. Some of the things that they had asked for, which uh some of which we had on our plans already, uh that we had. From our prior meetings with them from two thousand and nineteen, we explained to them that as we promised them that we were going to do the concrete walkway along the property. We were going to do some heavy landscaping along our property. We had told them that whatever damage occurred to the road during the course of construction, we were going to repair it. We've also shared with them the intentions regardless of the damage to the road. It was always the intent to mill the section of the road. That goes about fifty feet past our second entryway and we're going to repave that as part of the project. They asked for a couple of additional items. Um, they asked for one and I'm going to zoom in on it here. They asked where we're connecting the sidewalk to their property, that we put a section of fence on either side of it. For what they considered to be privacy, uh eight foot long section, six foot high. We agreed to that. They also asked, um, they said what one of one of the problems they've had, and they discovered this during the pandemic was. With the frequency of the Amazon trucks that come here or UPS or FedEx trucks. When they queue on this particular driveway to take a right-hand turn out onto Route nine. They encroach upon the ingress lane. So we were at and it what happens is cars are now queuing on Route nine. Because of the difficulty to take a right-hand turn. So we are going to uh increase this radius. We've had discussions with the DOT. So that those cars are not queuing on Route nine, they have the ability to access the site in the event that there's a UPS truck or a. Any other sort of a box truck uh that's in that particular location. The other requests that they made of us that we've shared with the uh planning department on a few occasions and the highway department. Apparently when the project was approved, they were under the. Opinion or understanding that they had a rear access drive. That was meant to be publicly connected out to the municipal road. That road was only intended for emergency access. Uh, spoke to both Kristen here and she verified it uh with the planning department. They also verified it with the highway department. It was never intended to be a public road, so we explained to them that it can't be converted to a public road as it's emergency access. With that being said, we were able to come to terms on everything. They provided us the letter. Uh, acknowledging that they're going to uh grant a drainage easement for this project. We've provided that to the town. With that letter, uh, we did not want to start the process again and then stop the process as we continue to wait for the letter. So now that we've had the letter, we'd like to move ahead with the project. As you had seen fit before. Uh, I've received all the comments uh that were generated. Which were minimal because I think we've gone through the extensive review of this project before. Uh, we do know uh. The one thing that did change, the other thing that's changed was we did get the comment from Central Hudson on the transformers. And uh, we're trying to do a balancing act with the requested screening and the requested setbacks. Uh, that Central Hudson has asked for, they've asked for a ten-foot clearance. From the building, they want a ten-foot clearance to the front and back and they want three foot on either side. So what we think is the best for this project is we're going to relocate and talk to Central Hudson from there. These are the two locations that they requested for the transformers. We think it's probably going to be better to relocate them in this area here. In this area over here, it'll provide us the opportunity to screen the front and the sides of them. And give Central Hudson the opportunity to have a clear opening adjacent to the roadway. In the event that they need avenue to access it here and here. So we'll be updating our plans to reflect that. I think that's going to be the biggest change on the recent mail that we sent to you.
Talking about um moving things around, did you guys see that note from the fire department?
Yes, it's it's this hydrant here.
Thought we thought we moved it once before the last time around.
They they said that uh it's obstructed.
This one right here is the parking space right here, so this is going to be moved to this island right here.
Okay.
We did that last time.
And then we we received, uh, we understand we do have to go through the Department of Health. Uh, we just haven't initiated it. Because we wanted to get some feedback from the water department and sewer department before we make a formal submission to those.
All right, thanks Chris. It was uh definitely good to see this back on. It was they were nice looking buildings. Is there a call? Krista?
Yeah, so thank you for the overview. Uh, it's on for a um. For secret review, site plan review and architectural review for secret purposes is an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. So this evening staff is recommending that the planning board declare their intent to be lead agency, um, and we would get that circulation out to interested and involved agencies. Uh, my site plan review comments are fairly minor, um, having again gone through the review process for the better part of a year, a few years ago. Um, and so the only update I had to my comments um would be about um. The potential for locating EV charging stations on the property.
That's a new code since.
Right.
We we actually took a look at that this afternoon, uh, Jimmy and myself, and we we think the southern end is an ideal location here. Putting maybe four in a row, either here or four in the center of these southern parking spaces.
Yep.
Uh, because they're not necessarily, it's kind of like the overflow parking for the project site and all the other parking on the.
Do we have assigned parking spaces for units or?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, so.
So.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if you have individuals that need to have a charge, we'll have four chargers over here.
And we can certainly, once you kind of think through that, um, something else to keep in mind is the uh EV ADA requirements. So access aisles and all of that. Um, and I mean, I don't know, are you thinking about including hookups within the the garage area parking or? I mean, that, I don't know, just a thought, I since you are proposing them.
The. The issue with including, it's not necessarily an issue, it's um, they would be isolated for that one individual apartment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you should probably keep them outside anyway.
But it is a possibility during the design stages. I I think most new development that you see residential condos, anything that involves a garage. Is they're running the electric in the event you need to put a charger in the future.
Yeah.
Any sort of new construction, it's it's including.
Conduit in the ground.
Yeah.
I mean. What's twenty thirty, it's all electric cars.
Yeah, that's 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 scary.
Right around the corner. So uh, so so maybe it it's probably uh, it's a good idea. It's considered an architectural.
Yeah, now some other projects, put extra conduit in the ground just so you don't have to tear a pavement or anything later on, you just run.
Something else that we've come across recently in some other projects, especially with respect to um ADA access and EV chargers is. The ADA code technically technically doesn't require um that the accessible area next to the parking space be connected to a sidewalk. We'd like to for you to look at that. I mean, just kind of experience with some of those things. It it makes sense to 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 be able to have that connection.
So uh, if I may, I just want to clarify. So the thought process is if we were to locate the chargers along this.
Parking aisle, we should have a connection to this sidewalk and this sidewalk is what you're recommending.
Yeah, and and one of them, at least one of them would have to be a an ADA accessible space. So I mean, we've seen, we've seen, we've seen them combined with other regular ADA spaces as well, so.
It's not, it's not a, so what?
You'll get that comment from the building department too.
So since you have an area, if I may, if since you have an area kind of identified on the plan right now that you would consider placing them, maybe what we can do is just.
Work through it.
Work through it offline um with Tim Sickles in the building department because um just placement of the charger itself with the access aisle, making sure there's enough width. Of the access aisle to whatever the ADA accessible route is. Um, again, it could get, we could, we could spin our wheels here, um, probably for a good hour.
Don't want to design it here.
Yeah, I I think I can get this to work for a pedestrian aisle and not a a van aisle. Uh, so I think we can make that work.
Anything else?
Uh, nope, not at this time. So recommending adoption of secret lead agency intent and then deferring action with comments this evening.
Thank you. And Andy, anything else?
Um, a couple of things, the um.
Infiltration.
The 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 stormwater, the stormwater is in pretty good shape. We still have kind of just a few minor comments. The um. I just want to make sure the the improvements to the current access, that's all going to be done within an existing right of way, right?
Correct.
Okay, because the the right now you've got a fifteen foot shown, but I think there's another ten that you have, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's a total of twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five, right. So that's that's good. Um. And when you're talking about the the drainage easement, you're you're showing the sidewalk um kind of crossing over into the Greenbrier property. Is that? Permission to build that sidewalk on their property, is that incorporated into the drainage easement?
It's not incorporated into the drainage easement. Um, it is a. What what I understood is going to take place or that there would be a cross easement.
Okay.
Between the properties as this sidewalk is. The original intent to that is for the in uh the school children. We're walking along the access drive right now because there's no means of access.
To get out. Okay, okay. So is that a a separate agreement that we would be provided with?
Yeah, there'll there'll be a separate, and that was never an issue, the separate cross pedestrian easement.
Okay.
Be provided with that.
Well, that's fine, I'll let.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I we had provided, the drainage was the holdup for the entire project, so we wanted to make sure we had that in writing, that we provided everybody.
Okay. And then I just want to go back to the fence and that same location again, just.
Sure.
Clarify. So. The fence is shown slightly into the into the paved area. I assume it's going to end kind of at the grassed area. What's the, how how did, how did they decide, Greenbrier decide how far to the south the fence would go? It kind of seems like a. I'm not, I'm I'm just curious how they decided where to end it going south.
Let me go to the site plan.
It looks like it goes, I don't know, maybe twenty feet. Um, is it intended to screen just building three from a certain vantage point?
I can tell you while we're looking at this and doing a detailed review, they've asked for a six-foot fence, not a four-foot. Uh, so that'll be corrected. They gave us dimensions uh to go, they had asked. Eight-foot section on either side of this, but if you can give us a little bit more, that would be great. We're just looking so people understand that it's a separation of property that you're entering. I didn't understand the full mentality of the decision. It's they felt the fence delineates Greenbrier property and your property.
Okay.
And I think their intentions are, they'd like to put up a sign that says you're entering Greenbrier property.
Okay.
Not a couple of lines on each side of the sidewalk there.
No, uh.
It's not running along the whole property line then, so.
And it's chain link, so it's not, you know, people passing through the fence would.
Still see what's.
Traffic coming and going, right?
Okay. We 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 had suggested a line of landscaping in that area. Uh, we thought that would fit in better, uh, but the HOA uh preferred a chain link fence.
With no slats.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? No slats. Black vinyl they wanted though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they didn't want the shrubbery and landscaping.
So so I guess, you know, they asked for eight feet, I I would just, I I caution that it looks like it goes into the 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 travel way, you know, so we may want to like adjust that.
Okay, I I I think, I think uh. That is the boundaries of the easement. But we can, we can fix the line styles there. For that fence line.
Okay, I yeah, I mean, again, I just don't want it to be an obstruction, so.
Oh, I, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. But just lined up just perfectly.
Correct.
Great, well, that makes sense because of the line, but yeah.
It's all coming together.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else Andy?
No, that's it.
Uh, I guess we can go around the board for comments. Uh, Peter? You had me at hello.
Uh, you got a a laundry list of things from the DOT today. Did you get a copy?
We did.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, Sharon, anything? First thing you're seeing is probably.
Yep, this is, this is all news, so no.
Uh, yeah, nothing, uh, just, you know, obviously you have some variances that will be required. Um, but this is a good project and, and, you know. Once, once it is completed, it'll look very nice, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the uh, you got the variances last time and I don't imagine it's an issue this time either. The, I can't remember what we resolved. There's some land, there's most of the landscaping to the, all the houses to the neighboring south.
We, for the neighboring south, we put.
Existing landscaping disappeared.
We were maintaining, well, they have existing landscaping on their property. We placed a six-foot high fence between their property and ours, and then we have a line. Of, I think it's a combination of red maples.
Yeah, I saw.
And some coniferous uh trees, um, bear with me.
I couldn't remember if there was a fence, okay.
I'll see how good my memory was, the trees.
I believe you.
Yeah.
I'm getting old, Simon, I'm starting to slip a little bit. All right, let's see what we got here.
Just to make sure, it looked like the.
So yeah, we've got some red maples here, uh, some oaks. Some pines. Yeah, so it's not too bad.
All right, thanks Chris.
Okay, I move the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of the notice of a set in. Copy of the EF and a copy of the application of the identified interested and involved agencies.
Second.
Moved in seconded for seeker, after lead agency, sorry.
Well, it's all.
Call the questions, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through thirteen, one through eleven.
Seconding.
Moves in seconded, call the question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Thanks for coming back in with this.
Would would it be possible to schedule a public hearing for uh the month of June in the event that you hear back from all the lead agencies in that timeframe?
Well, we can, I mean, if you're ready to, if you're prepared to make a submission on the twenty-eighth, I mean, we would just have, we would probably put you on for a public hearing. You don't have to set one with the planning board, so, yeah.
Fantastic.
I can't, I can't remember, I mean, I don't know the math between this date and if it is thirty days or.
Depends on when the notice goes out. It goes out tomorrow.
Well, it's going out tomorrow. No pressure. My list is.
I thought it was thirty. Somebody said forty-two?
No, thirty.
It's thirty, yeah, okay.
The forty-two was how many days between now and June.
Oh, okay.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck getting this again. Eliminate Dr. Hans Brochette's old house. It's not his property.
June twentieth or June twenty-eighth?
Twentieth.
June twentieth.
Twentieth.
Take that back then, so you got fourteen and twenty, thirty-four.
So that's still good.
Still needs the thirty, thirty. Good. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Adams Lot Line Revision.
Oh my god.
Somehow they don't want the pool up.
I, um, good evening. My name is Kathy Wise. I am here to present our submission for a proposal for lot line revision. For, um, which is involving Adams Farrer Farms and my property at seven-seven-one Duchess Turnpike. My property was formerly owned by my parents, Donald and Dale Adams, and when, uh, Don Adams installed the pool several years ago, he did not realize the pool was, um, transected the property. Line separating his home and his business. Um, in an event to, in an effort to remedy this situation, Adams Farrer Farms proposes to convene or convey roughly a quarter acre to my property. In doing so, my property will have the entire pool within its property lines along with the required, uh, setbacks. Uh, since the original submission, we have confirmed the address to be seven-seven-one, which is now listed on parcel access. Um, along with the new expanded right of way and driveway easement and maintenance agreement, um, which is filed with the Duchess County Clerk. It was, I also brought with me a copy of parcel access in case anybody needed to have that for the, uh, the address. And then in regards to the comment on the email I received the other day about, um. It, uh, the existing septic system to be shown, including piping and tanks and leach field. Um, I have since reached, I sent a, a form to the Duchess County Health Department, um, asking for information they may have, and then I also reached out to Mr. Teed. And, uh, he responded and said, uh, since you are adding land to encompass the swimming pool and the plan also states that there are no wells or septic systems within a hundred feet of the proposed. Conveyance parcel, I see no need to include the location of the exist, existing septic system. Um, yeah, he said, you know, if we know, which we do, we know it's, it's in the front, that, you know, that's just a good thing. I did find a, a plan that my parents had drawn up from nineteen sixty-four. I did make copies if anybody's interested, and it shows the septic tank out front of the house, which we know because of the way the pipes go out of the house, too.
It may be good to have on file.
So I'm, you know, nothing too exciting compared to the other plans.
Yeah, thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a lot of projects tonight, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So any questions?
Yeah, no, thank you so much for your diligence. Uh, you took on a lot, um, on your own to, to really, uh, get this all lined up. I'm going to speak as slowly as possible for our planning board member to get back in the room, so we'll be able to vote. Uh, yeah, um, okay, but it's on for a seeker review and a lot line revision review. For seeker purposes, lot line revisions are type-two action. Um, the language that I included is just the standard lot line revision, uh, review language. Um, you know, I know that you've already worked, worked through a lot of this. Um, but you'll, you'll certainly have the time, um, with a conditional approval in order to dot I's, cross T's, if you will, um, and I, I appreciate the effort in reaching out to the county health department and initiating that consultation. So at this point in time, uh, you know, staff, if the board is comfortable, um, is recommending that, uh, we adopt a, a seeker resolution for type-two action. Um, and also grant a conditional lot line revision approval. The lot line revision, um, approval and time extension, nailed it. Includes the, um, the maximum time permitted by our town code. Uh, so you'll be able to, uh, you know, there's, it's, it's typically a sixty-day window, but you'll have a hundred and twenty days from tonight. In order to clear, clean everything up and, and get it all, you know, taken care of, so, um, we'll continue to work with you, obviously, as you go.
Yeah. Thank you too, Kristen, for all the guidance.
No problem.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Uh, any comments from you, Andy, on this?
No, uh, you know, the comments, you know, I saw the email from, from Mr. Teed from the health department. That answers my question. It's also good to know that you know that it's going out the front. It's not affected by the other areas, so I'm fine.
Yeah, don't want that crossing boundaries or nothing. Peter, anything?
No.
Sharon?
No.
I mean, this is, this means like, once this is finalized, if I'm shopping it out, I can't use that part of the pool.
Tease with the, joke with the employees that they're going to have to go through me now.
All right.
So, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets criteria for seeker, uh, seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part six-one-seven dot five C sixteen and no further environmental review is required.
Thank you very much.
Moved to the seconded. Moved to the seconded for seeker. Call the question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a one-time sixty-day time extension as permitted by town code of said approval from Monday, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four forward to Friday, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, subject to the following, one through eight.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sitting through the whole meeting.
Thank you very much.
You see what's going on in the town at least that way.
Mr. Chair, I don't think you need me for anything else on the agenda. I don't do the architecturals or the, do me here for any of the time extensions.
Probably not. Diner, diner.
Don't overdo it.
No, I guess, guess you're right.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night. Okay, City Line Diner is up next.
Hello. I'm Nancy Forrest, with gloaty signs here representing City Diner.
Thanks for hanging in there as well.
I'm sorry?
Thanks for hanging in there all night.
Oh, yeah, five o'clock this morning was a long time ago. It's always the shortest ones that are at the end of the meetings. I'm used to it.
Sometimes.
Forty-seven years later. Since I first been here.
All right, you want to say anything about this?
Um, just that I think you can probably tell from the, um, photos that were submitted, the diner is a little rundown.
Yep.
Uh, a little disrepair. The new owner just wants to clean it up. Uh, we were in front of the zoning board the other night and received the couple of variances that we needed. And it's just fresher and cleaner. Um, they're already working on the landscaping. The parking lot's going to be redone. It's, uh, pretty cut and dry. The only thing we're changing, if you look at the, uh, before picture as it is now, um, that one band that lit around the top was blue. It's a very faded blue now. The red that we're putting up is not lit.
Okay.
The, uh, the pole sign, is this a problem sign or is that?
Going, it's going away, yes. All some new landscaping.
Good to have it updated.
Fresh paint.
The, uh, comments, Eric?
Uh, no, they're, they're, the Duchess County had one suggestion that, about the channel letters, uh, one of the sign cabinet, home channel letters, discuss whether cabinet sign can be replaced with a more visually appealing channel letter option. It's a recommendation with, just for their local concern.
If I could, we, um, we got reduced to fifteen square feet. I can't do that in channel letters, in fifteen square feet.
Oh, and I, I believe the, uh, I think you said pole sign, the pole sign is being removed.
Yes.
Right, right.
At the ZVA.
Yep, you already went to the ZVA, so any variances were already granted?
Yes. Severely reduced from what we wanted, but.
Can move forward. Okay, any comments from board members? Andy doesn't, he's just here, he doesn't have a permit. Peter?
No. No, I mean, I just had a question about the two parcels that were, you know, but you might not even know about that, so.
Two parcels?
There's two parcels that, um, some of the parking lot is in, um, you know, uh, next to the City Line Diner property. And it, I was just curious, like.
Yeah, I.
Who owned that? Did they lease, did they lease that for the parking? I was just curious, but.
I honestly don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just for our architectural review, we're not really thinking about that.
Yep. Okay.
Right. I don't think we have any conditions to, to think of. The channel letters can't be made that way. So I move the planning board grant architectural approval as presented.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, some time extensions, one-seventy-four Innis Avenue. I move the planning board grant one ninety-day time extension for the one-seventy-four Innis Ave application, moving the current approval expiration date from July twentieth, two thousand twenty-four to October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. BP four West Shillie House. I move the planning board grant, why don't you do this one?
Uh, I move the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions of conditional site plan and special use permit approval from June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four forward to December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
So that change?
Yes.
Second.
The applicant realized.
They need more time.
What was it, December what?
December twelfth.
So go to two nine, two extensions, okay?
Yes, second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. And Eastdale Village.
Oh my.
Subdivision of lots. I move the planning board grant a ninety-day time extension of conditional subdivision approval from May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four forward to August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Theory Materials. Chief Road. I move the planning board grant one ninety-day time extension of conditional site plan approval from June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four forward to September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. And lastly, we have Hudson Heritage. In for some time extensions, we also have some discussion of this that we made or the last.
Yeah, um, separately from the, separately from the time extensions, uh, we received a, a submittal and a request today of, um. The applicant, uh, Saber is go, is going to be, is proposing a, a lot line provision, uh, of the, the lot behind, the lot that includes ShopRite. The area of land behind it, um, includes the rail trail, and then the rail trail kind of comes to an end and this site kind of wraps around the end of it, and some of that land is all, is also adjacent to. The, the building that was proposed as a daycare center. I don't remember the lot numbers right now. Um, so they're proposing to separate. Divide that land behind ShopRite, leave part of it with ShopRite and, and transfer part of that land to the lot.
To the daycare.
How's it, the, it's not, well, who knows what it would be, the.
Yep.
Daycare center or something.
They call it a daycare lot.
So the issue, however, is, is not the lot line revision, but the timing. Um, they have a, uh, they're presum, they're trying, they're in the process of selling the commercial portion of the project. Um, they have arranged with a potential buyer to, uh, for a due diligence period and on June twentieth. Um, and then to complete all terms of the agreement for proposing a sale, including filing of a lot line revision by July twenty-second. So the applicant requested, they, they just weren't, they weren't comfortable with, um, being on the agenda from the June twentieth.
Two-day window, two-day window.
Well, no, it'd be a month. It would be, it would, that would be in time for due diligence, but they would need to have the lot line revision completed and filed by July twenty-second. So they requested that the board schedule a special meeting for June sixth, just to make sure that they have enough time. So it's in the board's discretion to schedule a meeting or not. Um, if the board decided to do that tonight, uh, there would be sufficient time to publish the notice, to do the notice of public hearing. I spoke with Dave Cooper, um, the attorney, on this, and, and he, he acknowledged it's board discretion as long as there's time for adequate public hearing notice. Um, but it's, it's the board's discretion. They've known about this for a while. Um, and they, I, I talked with Kyle about the lot line revision previously. He was interested in it. Um, there's also have, they just resubmitted plans for the, to close out the site plan and subdivision. That was approved, uh, last August. Uh, they were working on conditions and they had to redo it some, so it's, it's up to you.
I guess I'm concerned why they think a month is not enough. If, I don't know, Peter, you're more, you might know more about that kind of filings.
I, I really would, uh. I, I'm inclined not to have a special meeting.
The board, of course, would have to have a forum.
It would, it would be short, and we'd have to make sure everybody's available on June sixth at five P M, but it'd be a fifteen-minute meeting kind of thing, but. If they have a whole month, it feels, if we can do it at June twentieth.
It seems like, I, I, I think they were just looking for some buffer room.
I don't know what, what do you think they call?
Uh. Yeah, I mean, I would be able to make a June sixth meeting. We would need four of us, but it, it's, it's up to you guys. I. Whatever, whatever you guys think is okay, but, you know. If, if you got, you know, if you guys don't want to have a special meeting, that's fine.
What's the reason they need it?
They, um, their due diligence period ends June twentieth, and they need to complete any remaining conditions for closing on July twenty-second. And that's, that would include the filing of a lot line revision by, before the July twenty-second.
Due diligence period is only, that's like thirty days roughly from now. I can't imagine that their due diligence period was for thirty days. I just can't imagine that for.
Mike has his hands raised.
Mike?
Hi, Mike.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Mike.
Sorry I couldn't be there. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I didn't want to spread my, my germs.
Um. Thanks for hanging, for listening in.
Anyway, uh, I mean, to be quite honest, they've, they've known that they wanted to do this for some, a, a bit of time. So this is a classic example of, like, it's, you know, it, it's a problem that they've created for themselves, not really our, so if, if you're not inclined to have an extra meeting. Don't feel like you have to do that. Um, I mean, if it were, if you feel, you know, like, it's not a big deal and we'll, we'll just go ahead, great, but I, I don't want you to feel like.
Pressured.
You know?
Yeah, I don't want, yeah, because, I mean, really, we've been bending over backwards to get help with as much as we can, um, to keep moving things along and, and, uh.
It's not really our, it's not your problem that, you know, uh, that, that they'll have to deal with it if, if, if we just do a regular meeting, so.
Good.
My two cents.
Yeah, I'm not sure the, the room is even available at, at the, I mean, we used to have the first, first Thursday available to us for, for special, for special meeting, but I think there's another group here in, you know, right in the region. It's not too, my okay, some, uh.
I've also been, I mean, I've only been here for about six and a half years, but I know that we've done special meetings during the day. Whether or not that was above board or not, I don't know, but. But, yeah. I'm with Mike. Don't feel pressured.
Well, the first question is, do you want to?
Yeah.
Do you want to have one? And then the second question would be, is it possible? How would you do it?
Well, I guess the, the thing is, is whether or not we would have four of us available, that's really the.
Well, I guess the, the thing is, is whether or not we would have more of us available. That's really the question, because these last couple of meetings, we've had through.
This was a fair.
I mean, what, I mean, what.
Board members, so I don't know.
Well, what have, what is the issue of they, them proceeding with their conditions right now versus waiting for June twenty?
The, the lot line revision, Kyle had asked if, if they could, um, simply incorporate the lot line revision into the site plan subdivision that's now condition approval. And that's, it's changing the lot lines. I, staff can't approve that. That's a, that's a planning board action. It's a separate planning board action. So you would either have to come back on the full site plan subdivision, which is now under review for signature, and add the lot line revision to it. And I suggested, don't redo the approval that's already done. Get that done.
Yeah.
And then, and then the lot line revision by itself doesn't require a public hearing and could be, you know, could conceivably easily be one meeting. On the twentieth.
Right, because are they anticipating, you know, getting a conditional lot line and filing everything within the two weeks that go by between the two meetings or two?
No, no, they just want to increase the buffer from before July twenty-second.
It's a whole bunch they got, so. I think I repeated, I don't think we have to do an extra meeting.
Okay, so I'm sure we're not doing an extra meeting, so we're not doing one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then you have the time extensions.
Okay.
Yep, and the last time extension is I move the planning board to extend the expiration date of the twenty twenty-third, twenty-three amended section one subdivision plant, plat, as specified at end of September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three adopted resolution. Condition number twenty-four for an additional ninety days from the previous extended date from June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four forward to September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. And I move the planning board to grant time extensions of the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two conditional amended site plan preliminary and final subdivision approvals for an additional ninety days from June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four forward to September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four to zero. All right, any other things board members would like to bring up for tonight?
No, I don't think so.
Feel better, Mike?
Yep.
I, uh, I motion that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second.
Move to the seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Everybody wants to go.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, George. Thanks, Mike. Take care.